Welcome everyone. Citizen visit form request to speak in front council, please, I would like to invite Mr. Fara. Would you come forward sir, please? Ms. Fara, you have six minutes to do.
Thank you Mayor Pro-Tim. Had the opportunity to sit through a civil service hearing back during the summer that was two and a half days about. Listened to the whole thing, had the civil service commissions ask for their report, I still haven't received it yet. But at the last meeting, we, it was brought up about open records requests and as well as some of the finances within the city. I'd stated to you before I'd came and I guess when Mayor Evert was here, ask him about open records request. And this is just to inform you all as a council, this is part of what transparency, in my opinion, and you know, the lack thereof that is going on or taking place currently and you know, and I just, I ask this so that we can all be better informed as citizens. I've sent an open records request for the cost of that hearing as well as what costs were associated with that individual being off for the period of time that they were, I guess, on leave or terminated or whatever the case may be. Prior to the reinstatement, that was dated on August thirty first, I sent that to Mr. Camacho. It had to go through Taylor Olson, once again, and I don't know how much of a cost, but I'm sure it was a minimum of thousand dollars. Then it had to go through, it came back from the Attorney General. I got it back on January the second, that says yes, release the, release the information. I don't, I just, I have a, I'm having a hard time understanding why there's so much resistance to people having information and us as citizens being a blast for it. I know it was brought up last meeting that that was costing the citizens money, but this, in my own estimation, has cost the city over six hundred thousand dollars. Just one case, one legal case. We talk about, you know, we need, we need money for our employees, we need money to build facilities, we need money to do the things that we need to do on a daily basis. But yet, we'll, we'll waste six hundred thousand dollars on an attorney. And, and no offense, Mr. Olson, I'm sure, you know, but you understand, but you know, as taxpayers, it's, it's difficult for me, sitting here, knowing that right here, I brought these for y'all. Knowing that Thursday, I know what Thursday is, right? Tax day, everybody's property taxes, I have to pay all these on Thursday. Knowing that my property taxes went up significantly this year, simply because, and I can attribute it to a good portion of it, to six hundred thousand dollars in legal fees that we've wasted. I understand that in this town, there's, there's people that, you know, we have differences and we disagree sometimes to extremes and that's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that we're unable to debate and discuss things. You know, I've always encouraged that with anyone. We, we tend to get down to the pettiness of throwing mud and, you know, coming up with who's the, who's the worst person, who's the bad person. Well, I can tell you, you guys are our representatives and you're tasked with watching out with the fiduciary duties of this city. That's very, very important. And when we're wasting the money and then we go through a hearing, just like we had an ethics hearing last Monday night, that the council as a body, y'all voted seven zero, that there was no ethics violations that took place. And now, we're going to turn around and we're continuing to not put an individual, now we have a lawsuit on the table that we're continuing to waste money. As, and you're wasting our, our money as taxpayers, it's your money also, but it's ours, you know? So, all I ask is that, let's set some of the pettiness aside, let's set some of the, you know, the Hatfield, the McCoys, the ridiculousness. And do what's right for the citizens, do what's right for all of us as taxpayers and business owners. I still get it all the time from business owners about how ridiculous our taxes are, how our water rates are out the roof, you know? Nothing's being done, so y'all have an opportunity, step forward tonight, y'all have the opportunity and the option to move forward and put a guy back to work, reinstate him, just like the civil service commission said back in August or September. And then, just like that was stated by the civil service director or the commissioner, president of the head body of the body, said last week, that's what their intent was. Do the right thing, stand up whether you're on one side of the fence or the other, it doesn't matter, do the right thing. Save us as taxpayers from having to spend six hundred thousand dollars that goes down the drain. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Fara. I would like to invite Mr. Stacy Corbin, please come forward ma'am, thank you. You have six minutes ma'am.
Hi, Stacy Corbin, forty-five oh five, Nadine, Houghton City, Texas. And before I get started, I just wanted to apologize for my outburst Monday night, I was pretty frustrated, I'm still learning. So, I appreciate y'all being patient with me on that. And the reason I was frustrated is, as I was sitting through that, I did feel like the gentleman up here, and please keep in mind, I don't know this guy, other than, you know, our one interaction on Facebook. But I did feel like he was being attacked by some of the council members, not saying anyone in specific. Anyway, so I got a little frustrated with it, but I did want to apologize for my outburst on that. And second off, I did want to address comment, there was a comment made about the petitions. I myself, and I can't speak for everyone, but I can speak for myself, I got almost a thousand of those signatures myself. I don't feel like any of those were gotten under false pretenses. I was pretty clear that the items listed at the top of that petition were to get rid of Fathom, get the water bills lowered and to address the storm drainage fee. I feel like we've brought all of that to council, it doesn't mean we got everything we wanted, but I do feel like those are the issues that we have brought to council, it was even voted on, on the storm drainage fee. By getting rid of Fathom, we felt like at the time, and many of us still feel, a lot of those water bill issues will be lowered. Whether it's billing inaccuracies, whether it's fees, whether it's just a miscommunication on how things are communicated from Fathom to the residents, but I know that those are being addressed, but I did want to clear that up. And that I don't in any way feel like those were gotten under false pretenses, so. And then lastly, I did want to touch on this, it was brought to my attention, my niece and about twelve of her little friends were together this year, this year. Sorry, I'm super nervous, y'all know I get nervous up here. This past weekend, they're all twenty, twenty-one years old, so they, they are, actually, I guess it was the weekend before last. But they had a concern, some of the streetlights, they're not necessarily out, they're just dim, and if you're on a street like our street, where it curves, there's a pretty big spot where there's not much light. And with the crime rate, some of them at that age, they're out walking their dogs and stuff after dark. So, I just told them I would bring it up, maybe it might be something we could look at, anyway, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you ma'am. Anyone else would like to speak in front council, please come forward. I have seen none and we clothe the visitor speaking at this moment at six ten, thank you. Mr. Fong, are you here ma'am? We save this moment because I don't believe we have the executive session today, so. Item number one, monthly financial report.
Okay, Mayor Pro-Tim and the city council, it's a pleasure to present to you the December monthly financial report. Since we haven't presented the November report, so you can see that the presentation here is giving you three months. For the end of, at the end of December last year, you can see that we have a front balance of about forty-six point five million dollars citywide, which we have received about twenty point three percent, twenty-three point million, which is about twenty-six percent of the revenue. And the expenditure at the end of December is about twelve point four million dollars, is about thirteen percent. So, you can see that we collected more than twenty-five percent because twenty-five percent is the benchmark for three months. Okay, as for the largest fund for the city, which is the general fund, you can see that we collected revenue about nine point one million dollars, which is about thirty-one percent. And the expenditure is about seven point eight million dollars, about twenty-four percent. So, our fund balance for the general fund is at nine point six million dollars at the end of December. Okay, looking at the public tax, you can see that the actual match the budget kind of. So, most citizens will pay their public tax before the end of January. So, as Mr. Fara just said that, he has all those ready to pay. So, so you will see that at the end of January, we probably will see quite a lot as well. So, up to the end of December, we receive about four point four million dollars in the public tax, and which is about forty-eight percent of, for the year. And for the sales tax revenue, we receive about two point seven million dollars so far, again, it quite similar to the budget. And we have collected about twenty-six point eight percent for the year. Okay, looking at the comparison of the three years' sales tax, you can see that this year, we have received the purple one, the past three months, you can see that they are higher than last year. There is this exception for this year, so there's a big adjustment there, that's why it's so high there. Okay, so looking at twelve months from January two thousand eighteen to December two thousand eighteen, you can see that the cumulative percent comparing, comparing to two thousand seventeen, we are up about eight point seven percent. And also, for the month of December, we are about two percent higher than the previous year. So, you can see that Houghton City is doing pretty well. In fact, if you look at the percentage, we got the highest percent increase for two thousand eighteen. So, are there any questions? Oh, one more, you're like, okay, that's the last one, okay. Any questions for the?
Thank you, council, you have any question? Ms. Brown, go ahead sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Fong. On back to the sales tax, I'm just curious, why is North Richland Hills not on there, our, our neighbor?
It's right there, we just, we just didn't use the rich hand, where did it go? It's there.
Richland Hills.
Richland Hills.
Yeah, I'm curious about North Richland Hills.
It should be there, I'll put it there next time.
Okay, thank you. Just curious of where they stand compared, since they are a, you know, contiguous, contiguous border with us.
Okay.
Any more question from council? I believe you done a good job, nobody want to ask you a question, I'll pick on you. The next item will be quarterly investment report for two thousand eighteen, Mr. Fong.
Two thousand eighteen, yes, at the end of last year, this is the first quarter of the investment report. I'm happy to say that the total investment is about fifty-five million dollars, which is about four point eight million dollars more than the previous quarter, that is at the end of September. And you can see that the unrealized loss is a little bit lower than the previous quarter. The reason is the interest rate is really going down again, all right? It peaked at November and then the December went down. Okay, as I have mentioned before, although we have unrealized loss, we will not have a realized loss because we will wait until the investment matures before we are not going to sell it, so we will not incur losses at all. And at the end of December, we have about hundred and sixty-six thousand interest that we haven't collect. So, and then the weighted average maturity is about three hundred ninety-six days, which is a little bit lower than the previous period. And also, the interest we are earning is about two point two-two percent. And compared to the six-month treasury rate is about two point five-six percent. Okay, looking at the portfolio allocation, you can see that we invest most, more than fifty-three percent in government agency. And we have about eight point six million dollars in CDs. And municipal security, we have a little bit more than three million dollars, and investment pool about seven mil, and cash about seven million dollars, that make up our portfolio. Okay, looking at the maturity, we are allowed to invest up to three years. And you can see this is the breakdown of the different maturity. You can see that we have quite a lot in the one to thirty days, and then a little bit in up to three months, and then half a year, and then a year, and then one to two years and three years. So, this is very normal, we, we cannot invest more than three years. Okay, looking at the treasury yield curve, you can see that December two thousand eighteen, it went down compared to September. And for the, for the long range, long term, the two years and three years. But the current, the shorted term, one month, three months, six month, and one year, the rate for December is still higher than the previous quarter. Okay, looking at the gross domestic product, this is the productivity for the United States. We, we have information only up to the third quarter, and the fourth quarter's information is not available yet. But you can see that it went down a little bit, so still about three percent though. All right, looking at the consumer's confidence level, the level at the end of December is about hundred and two point one. So, this is the index, anything above one, one hundred is a good, that means people are optimistic. So, you can see that again, the GDP is not, we don't have the last quarter. Locally, the unemployment rate for Houghton City, again, we only have information up to October. And Houghton City is about two point nine percent unemployment, unemployment, the national is about three point five percent. So, this will see that locally, we are doing very well and people are still has a positive outlook for the future. So, are there any questions for me?
So, you have any question for Ms. Fong? Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Mrs. Fong again. Who gathers, how do we gather the data on Houghton City unemployment rate? Who?
It's, it's by the US Census Bureau, we don't do that.
Okay.
It's, it's, the federal government is doing those. All this information are done by the government, so I think it's, it's the US federal government. So, next time I will put the quote there, where, where it come from.
Thank you, Mrs. Fong.
Any more question from council? I see none, thank you Ms. Fong for the good work you do for a city.
Thank you.
Appreciate that ma'am. Now, we go to item number three, two thousand eighteen crime statistic, full quarter. Chief Phillips?
Good evening Mayor, council, citizens. First want to begin by two little announcements. The first one, we've had a couple of major incidents over the last, I guess, the last half of last year. We had the robberies that we talked about and the pursuit. I just ended up arresting five or six individuals that were related into the robberies that were going all over Tarrant County. And then, as everybody's seen, the pursuit that related, you know, ended in a crash with a civilian and a car crashing on fire. I've been here twenty years and we've all experienced things throughout our careers, police officers and firefighters, that you just say, well, that's part of the job. And as a, as a boss, it has a whole different meaning. And Chief Lane, when he was there, he'd always get up and say, you know, y'all are the most, y'all make me proud, y'all are the best in the business. And none of that really sunk home until I got that call at eleven o'clock that night and then saw the video. And it touched, because there's not a doubt in the world that we have the best firefighters and the police officers in the state, no doubt. And I know I always said, he's just, just lip service, but it's not. And then this transitions into my second thing. I sit on the board for police chief training and we were recently in Huntsville talking about this. And we were going around the room and they had a variety of agencies from varying, you know, sizes, locations, you know, demographics, you know? School police, university police chiefs, and they, you know, there's twenty-eight of us in the room, and we all sat down and we were talking about sizes. All of us, even the citizens, I'll ask y'all, out of twelve hundred incorporated cities in Texas, how big or what top percentage do y'all think Houghton City sits? We're at six percent, we're never, we're number seventy-four in the state out of twelve hundred cities in size. We kind of get drowned with the metroplex and the thought that we're a small city, but overall, if you look in Texas, we're number seventy-four in the state, six percent. So, me being a police chief within a city that's in the top six percent and working with the officers and the firefighters and city administration, elected officials I do, makes me proud. And I just wanted to make sure that that was conveyed and y'all understood the level of expectations and the level of pride y'all should possess being an elected official in the top six percent of the state, so thank y'all. And again, a couple of the first slides are missing, so this is the fourth quarter, but I've changed it to where it's the fourth and first quarter. I wanted the crime stats to go along with the fiscal year, so now it's going to run from October to September instead of January to December. Our total calls for service are down ten percent, went down from ten thousand to ninety-two hundred. Y'all should have all received a PDF of the breakdown of all the codes, ACO and calls for service. All our part one offenses, which are broke down further throughout the, the slides, we're basically running even. Like down point three percent. Like down point three percent year-to-date. So compared to two thousand eighteen to this year, we were up twenty-nine percent. And then it will go into, and of course, we were up on the murder category by one, by the tragic event that happened up north. And then the rapes were up thirty-one percent. And again, we broke these down and out of those thirty, out of those twenty-one, ten of them were child, family-related, so it was a direct relative of the children. Six were statutory, so they were basically based on age. Three were adults, adult, spousal, domestic partner, you know, relationships. And two were friend. We had none that were unknown. And the child and family was the increase, so we looked at that. And with the start of the school, the school district did a presentation to the children about, you know, correct touch, not correct touch. And from that, we had a lot of outcries that we investigated from there. So that was a partial of the, partial cause of the increase. And surprisingly, the robberies are up quarter to quarter, a hundred percent. And of course, we talked about that, the last ones, it's transitioned to this quarter. That was the group that was going around and robbing anything they put their hands on. Like I said, five arrests were out of that one, and they were responsible for numerous robberies. And we had another one that robbed the one-twenty-one in Holton Road, the Conoco on the south side. That was a male that had just been released out of prison, was having difficulty finding a job, getting re-acclimated into the environment. So that was what he knew and what he did. And he was responsible for one of ours, but he had done numerous across this county as well. But year-to-date, compared to the year before, we were drastically down because the previous year, we had all those at the beginning of the year where the, the ones were running around town. Aggravated assaults are down forty-three percent quarter to quarter and twenty percent year-to-year. As I noticed, the bottom didn't change either. Should be eight, yeah, that's, that's right, nevermind, getting ahead of myself. Burglary of a building, these are businesses, anything that's not a habitation, nothing that no one, where no one lives. We're down fifty percent in that quarter, quarter to quarter, and fifty-two percent year-to-date. Burglary of a residence, quarter to quarter was down, which is pretty phenomenal since usually your increase of burglaries usually occur around Christmas. And those, those were down, but we were up year-to-date. Most of those are during the day, front door, rear door being forced open, doing that. They've made some arrests, but not, it wasn't, they were more single incidents that they were arrested for and it wasn't a multiple incident. So there was still a bunch of crimes to be solved on that one. Thefts were down fifteen percent and then up twenty-six percent for the year. These are mainly, you see the sales tax was up, it's because we're getting more businesses. With more businesses, more people want to come to Holton City and not pay for the items and pay the sales tax to the, to us, so they try to get it for free. Beer runs, thrift stores, and those areas are usually the ones that are getting hit the hardest. Burglary of motor vehicles, up eighteen percent quarter to quarter. Again, that's attributed mainly, you'll see an increase every fourth or first quarter at the end of the year because of the Christmas holidays. These are occurring late night to early mornings, residents, and close to houses are the number-one locations that are being targeted. And then apartment complex is the number two. And then overall, we were down year-to-year. Vehicle thefts were up seventeen percent quarter to quarter and eighteen percent year-to-year. There's been twelve arrests within that quarter for those thefts. Majority of those were U-U-M-V. On the U-U-M-V, it's usually a known offender, they didn't really steal the vehicle. A theft is technically, you don't know them. U-U-M-V is more like, I loaned you the vehicle and you didn't, you failed to return it, so. And then out of that, there was only three that were vehicles with keys in the ignition. Our arrests were down ten percent, five-twelve to four-sixty-eight, and then up three percent year-to-year. Anybody having questions about the crime?
Castle, you have any question for Chief Phillips? Ms. Brown, please.
Thank you, Chief Phillips. Just so I'm clear, under property theft, that's where shoplifting falls?
Correct. It also transitions and you leave a bike in the front yard or something like that, where they're not blocking, breaking the plane of entry into the house, then that, that would be a theft. So if you leave something out in the yard and they take it, that's considered a theft and not a burglary.
I don't want to put you on the spot. What percentage of the property theft would you say shoplifting is?
That'd be putting me on the spot. I can get the number for you.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'm not talking to the mass.
Okay, thank you. I would just be curious of, of that total, what, what shoplifting with the new businesses and things like that?
I can definitely get that for me.
Thank you, Chief Phillips.
Anyone else have a question for Chief? You don't, I have one question. Among nineteen fifty people arrests, what percent are, what number of juvenile commit the crime compared with adults?
If you look at the, the sheet on the, this sheet I gave you, the juveniles, not counting runaways, were eighty-nine.
Yet eighty-nine, right?
Eighty-nine. Not, that's not including the runaways, but just arrests for criminal offense were eighty-nine.
You compare from last year, the upper dial, I mean, the year before, like two thousand seventeen?
I can get that number, I don't have it right here in front of me.
Okay, thank you, Chief. And no more question? Thank you so much. Oh, I'm sorry. Castle, Madame Nance?
Thank you. I would just like to congratulate you. When I saw that video of that, your officers responding and the fire department responding to that accident, I'm telling you what, the professionalism, the, I mean, it was a major, major emergency. And the professionalism, the way that they handled it, I was so proud. Thank you.
And there was, there was citizens that were bringing them items to come. It really instilled a lot of community effort into that. And it was, they debriefed on it last week, and that was one of the topics that they brought up, is that they turned around and they didn't realize how many people were there. Of course, you still had the ones that had their cell phones out and not wanting to help, but there was, the majority of them were really wanting to help. And, you know, what can we do to help put the fire out and all that? And that really says something about Holton City.
One question, and maybe you can't even answer. Did they have to extricate the woman through the window?
Yes.
Okay.
The door was, due to collision, the door was pinned where they couldn't open it.
Okay.
So they were, they had to break the windows out to get her out.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Any more have question for Chief? Look left, right, and thank you, Chief.
I still got a couple.
I think you done.
I'm just writing down my, so I remember what the entry else questions.
Appreciate that.
Ready for code enforcement? Oh, I got some more to go. I'll just give me a break.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were, keep going, we have.
We'll do the code enforcement, this is a code enforcement year. And we recently just now become full-staffed. We were at four, so two thousand seventeen, we actually had, a majority of that year, we had a full staff. One left to become a police officer with us, and the other, due to health issues, resigned. So we just recently, this month, got back to five. So these numbers will definitely go up next year, or throughout this year, sorry. Throughout this year, you can see the, the numbers of violations, the new violations, abated violations, and the amount of inspections they, they conducted throughout the year. And then these are the top categories that we, y'all deemed as important for stats. You can see the brush, grass, junk trash, debris, if I can speak to that, junk vehicle, parking, and zoning. Those are the amount of violation, or the amount of inspections they conducted on those violations this year. These are the results of those investigations, usually ends up in a citation or warrants issue. As I've explained before, anytime a violation needs to be abated, and like mowing the grass or removing a vehicle or something like that, they have to go through a process. And often, that process requires a warrant to be written. Like I said, throughout the year, the summer was kind of hard on the grass, so they didn't really have a lot of grass violations. And that's why they weren't able to, they didn't have the opportunity to write a lot of warrants this year. And then these are the amount of liens filed for the year to abate those violations. They've been working good with finance to make sure that those liens are filed and handled appropriately throughout the year for those violations. And that's all I have on code enforcement. You have any questions?
Any one have a question? Castle and Brown?
Thank you again, Chief Phillips. On the fines on code enforcement, is it like traffic citations? Does this, do we have to send part of that money to the state on code enforcement fines? Like lawns, mowing, things like that?
I think a portion, some of it goes to the state, but most of it stays here because it's city ordinance.
Oh, I was just on my TMM magazine last week or last month. So I'm just, I'm mad and I'm floored of what the state gets out of local citations. It, it's unbelievable, unbelievable.
I'll, I'll stay on the fence on that one.
Anyone have a question for Chief? Chief, can you go back on the first slide of code enforcement? Right there. You're talking about twenty-one thousand eight hundred eighty-nine case or inspection?
Inspection, so every time, you know, they get a complaint or they notice a violation, that's a, that's an inspection because they're actually viewing the, you know, the property or the violation. They return back to follow up, that counts as an inspection as well, so.
And how many officer you have?
Right now, we have five. We had four.
Five?
Four ending last year, and then three for a majority of last year.
I should ask the city manager because he said five. And if you divide for twenty-one, if he worked every day, that's mean over four hundred, forty-two hundred case per person, how they do it?
With forty-two hundred?
Goes back to what I started out with at the beginning. We work with some of the greatest people that I've ever met, so they, they do their job with what they got. As long as we make them happy and keep them here, then they'll continue to provide the services they provide.
That's excellent officer, you know, and thank you so much, and keep going. You think you do better than ex-chief?
Absolutely not. Everything I've learned, good and bad, come from him, so.
That's why people kick him out to be city manager, right? Thank you, Chief, one more time, and you office.
I got one more.
Oh, you have?
I got animal services next.
I'm sorry. Keep going.
I'm just a wealth of info, sir.
I will let you make a call, say when you finish, okay?
And the next one is animal services. Again, these are stats that we decide, y'all decided as council that y'all wanted to see. The first one is the dogs category. We were down one percent of the dogs intake from year to year. We were, you know, the first category and adopted, we, this year, we were thirty percent, thirty-four for returned, thirty-two for euthanasia, and then four percent for rescue. Again, before everybody gasps about the euthanasia, we do not euthanize for space. No matter what you read on Facebook or you see, we do not euthanize for space. Sick, injured, or aggressive animals are the only ones that get euthanized. You can see that we've worked with the Mr. Watkins and the Animal Services Board. We've got some relationships with some rescue groups to, for cats. And you'll, you'll be able to see our cats have actually taken an increase up because they've been able to work with those a little bit more closer. Feral cats. Like, you know, Mr. Watkins and I talked, you know when it's a feral cat, if it's trying to kill you every time you look at it. So that's, that's the results, every one of those get euthanized. The cats tame, we were up twenty-one percent in this category. Our adopted rate went from forty-two to forty-seven percent. The return rate went from four to seven percent. Our euthanasia rate went from thirty-nine to nineteen percent. And then our rescue went from fourteen to twenty-three percent. And then calls for service, again, we just recently got full-staffed at the end of last year. They were at the minimum, or we were one down. So they did seventeen hundred calls for service last year as opposed to the thousand before. And that's all I have with that.
And Castle have a question for Chief? I see none and.
Yeah, you need to turn the monitor toward you or something. How many people do we have at Animal Control?
We have one kennel tech and four animal control officers.
Okay, thank you, sir, so total of five.
Correct.
Thank you, sir.
You have one more?
The data's not on it, it's, I handed that out, that's, it's hard to read on the screen. That other sheet I have, it'll break it down for basically all the numbers, amount of profit, like stolen property monetarily valued, and then how much the recoveries were.
Thank you for excellent report, and final, thank you.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, six thirty? At this time, I will close the, the work session, and we will come back at seven for regular session. Thank you.
Just Brown, one, two, three, four.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is seven oh six, today January the twenty eighth. Before we enter the regular session, would like to invite everybody stand up for invocation and plat of allegiance by Council Madam Janine Nun.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father God, thank you for this beautiful winter day and your blessings on Haltum City. We gather this evening to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral, as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us, and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. We ask for your protection and strength for each and every one of our first responders, our military, and our state and national government officials. Thank you again for your love for each of us and for our community. In Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be sick, thank you. Okay. The mayor is not today, here today, so my name is Andrew, I'm mayor pro tem along with the council member and our staff. Welcome everyone here on the regular meeting. The next item will be announcement and event will conduct by city secretary, Mr. Al Camacho.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. In community projects, the Veterans Memorial Committee has kicked off a brick fundraiser to help raise funds for Phase Two, which includes a Walk to Freedom that will be paid with the engraved bricks purchased through the fundraiser. To order a brick and be a part of this very special project, you can visit online or you can stop by the rec center to fill out an order form. Four by eight bricks are forty dollars and eight by eight bricks are a hundred dollars, and the deadline is March first, twenty nineteen. Haltum City calendars are still available at the city hall, the recreation center, and the library. Registration is opened up for the thirty-third annual Haltum Stampede 5K and Fund Run, which will be held Saturday, February ninth, at the rec center. Walk-up registration is available at the rec, or you can register online at www dot active dot com. Sponsors are needed, so please contact the rec center for more information, and runners are also needed, and you can sign up a group of ten or more and save five dollars per runner. Please contact the rec center for more information. And registration is now open for co-ed youth soccer. Registration deadline is February twenty eighth, and the season will begin the week of March eleventh. The cost for four and under, and six and under, is fifty dollars. The cost for eight and under and ten and under is eighty dollars. They have a special discount registration day this Saturday, February second, from nine AM to five PM at the rec center, and you can save ten dollars per participant. Coaches and referees are needed, and you can contact the rec center for more information. The Parks and Rec Department has begun the process to build a new ten-year Parks and Open Space Master Plan with the help of MHS Planning, and are in need of input from all of our residents. A brief survey is available online through the Parks and Rec Facebook page or the city website, or you can fill out a hard copy at the rec center or library, and the deadline is February fifth. Volunteers are needed to read to a class of BISD elementary students during World Read Allowed Day on February first. Registration link and more details are on the Community Relations page of the city website. In the public library, library activities such as a teen programs, family movie night, super science Saturdays, adult GED, ESL classes are all listed on the library's website for the date and times. Some of these programs have changed, so please check the website for times. Landscapes of Haltum City is a coloring book of Haltum City buildings and scenes created by members of Haltum High School Art Club, and they are for sale for at ten dollars. And that's our announcement, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Al Camacho. Today, when I came to the meeting about five thirty, and Mr. Al Camacho looked at me and said, "What are you wearing today?" Actually, I wore the blue tie. And he ordered me, he told me, he said, "You are acting the mayor. You can't wear the blue. You have to go home and change it." I have to go home and change it. By the way, I'm proud to do it, because I have never seen our football get up to that level. And the next one item will be the presentation for Haltum's High School Football Team. Yes, by Mr. Redfield, the Assistant City Manager. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Well, it's an honor to, uh, to deliver this certificate of recognition today, and just so everybody knows, I'm not wearing an orange tie, but I do have my Buffalo pin here, so, so I'm representing. Uh, but just wanted to, uh, read this certificate of recognition, and after that, have maybe Coach Taylor and whatever players step up here. For now, if you guys would stand there, that would be great. This is, uh, two thousand eighteen Haltum Buffaloes. Whereas, the two thousand eighteen Haltum Buffaloes undefeated through the regular season and winning District Three Six A, swept through the two thousand eighteen UIL playoffs and captured by District with a forty-seven forty win over Arlington Bowie, and an area victory with a forty-two twenty-seven win over Midland Lee, a regional win of forty-one thirty over Lewisville Hebron. This team, by virtue of their thirteen and one record, achieved the farthest advance in Haltum High School football history, and also the farthest advance of any BISD school in the highest classification of UIL Texas football. And whereas the Buffaloes, under the leadership of head coach Jason Tucker, his quality coaching staff, and the Buffalo players are now commended for their exceptional year of effort, dedication, and pride for the two thousand eighteen football season. Now, therefore, on behalf of the mayor of Haltum City, David Everett, and on behalf of the Haltum City Council, city staff, and citizens, we wish to publicly recognize the two thousand eighteen Haltum High School Buffaloes for a tremendous achievement in their football program, so congratulations.
This young man here must be a coach, huh? Coach, you have anything to say?
I can say this, the community is really very, very supportive, and we had a lot of wins, especially down the stretch, so, yeah. I think the outcome could have been different without the support we had in the stands, especially in the playoffs, especially in the Hebron game up in Denton, we had a tremendous turnout, um, you know, decent little drive up to Denton, but we had a tremendous turnout. It was a very close game. We had a home game in the playoffs versus Bowie. Bowie was a very tough team, and I don't think we'd come back in the fourth quarter without the energy from the crowd, so it was great having the community there, um, and without the community, I don't think we would get as far in the playoffs as we did, so we really appreciate that as well.
Thank you, one more time, and we'll make our cities so proud of you. Thank you so much. Make sure next year you go to the Super Bowl, okay? Thank you.
And also, I'd like to add, Coach Tucker, that was quite an award that, that was bestowed upon you too, the, I congratulate you on the, on the Landry Award.
Ms. Rowe, you want to say something?
Um, I, I'm a band dad, so I was fortunate to see just about every game. The only, I only, I missed one game, and I missed the last playoff game in Lubbock, because I had to appear onstage for Gypsy, because I was Mr. Goldstone. And so, but I was thrilled, uh, very exciting, particularly the last games were nail biters. And so, you guys, I'm looking forward to next year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you one more time. Good job, good job, excellent. The next item will be item number one, monthly. Which one? Oh. Okay, we go to concern agenda. Number four, five, and six. Council, you have any question, any correction, or something? If not?
Yeah, um, just that, if the city manager can explain the waiver of conflict for joint permitting for Tous. Thank you.
Sure, I'll let Wayne cover that one.
Thank you. What this is, we've, we've got a development coming up by Burgville Independent School District that's going to encompass property that's located both in Haltum City and Richland Hills, and there's some agreements that need to be entered into with regard to that. Obviously, I'm city attorney for Haltum City, one of my partners is city attorney for Richland Hills, and therefore, because we've got both entities being involved, um, there's always a potential for conflicts of interest that arise when, when you're representing two different entities involved in a contract, so in order for us to be able to do that ethically, we need both Richland Hills' permission and Haltum City's permission to do that. And Richland Hills has already approved this, but it requires your approval also if you want us to be involved in this project. Otherwise, you can, you can find another law firm to assist you with that because of the potential conflict, but, uh, we, we need you to tell us whether or not you're comfortable with us proceeding in that manner.
Are you okay with it?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, any more question?
Yes, uh, Mr. Olson, what, the, the fees, were there, are there permitting fees at all, since it's the school district, or?
There, there will be some fees involved, there's, there's inspection and plan review fees.
Plan review, and how will that be split?
Well, that's what the agreement between Richland Hills and Haltum City will, will work out, and we've already got proposals, I think, uh, your Public Works Director has been working with the Richland Hills Public Works Director on that, and our, our role is to put together an agreement which, which, um, states exactly what the cost sharing will be in that regard.
And that will be brought before council to be approved, or?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any more question? If you don't, item number four, five, and six ready for motion. Ms. Brown.
There we go. I would like to make a motion that we approve items four, five, and six on the consent agenda.
Thank you, and item number five is second reading?
Yeah.
Ms. Brown, yes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. What, uh, Councilman Rowe?
That's for a second.
We already got the second, and I'm ready for you, ready to show your vote. Ms. Walker? We got item number four, five, and six passed with the vote of six. Seven? Six, you just come back, right? And you say yes? Yeah, will be seven, oh, and the item number four, five, and six passes. The next regular agenda will be item number seven, Mr. Butler, ordinance number oh dot two zero one nine dot zero zero four dot one five.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is a public hearing and consideration on an application of Stephen Westfall for a conditional use permit for automobile and light truck repair shop and vehicle storage facility in an M-two heavy industrial locally known as twenty-three thirty-three Delonte. The applicant's operation is to buy vehicles, then bring them back to their warehouse and make them ready for retail dealerships. They typically buy vehicles from sources like auctions or banks that are impaired in some way. The applicant brings the vehicles back to the warehouse and performs repairs on them, ranging anywhere from light bulb replacement, door replacement, to suspension or engine replacement, usually some sort of part replacement. Their business does not repair for public customers. Once the vehicles have been repaired, they bring them to auction to bid on by companies such as Drive Time, CarMax, and other major automotive sales facilities. Any painting of vehicles is outsourced and not performed on the property. On January twenty-second, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit by a vote of four zero. Uh, the structure was built in nineteen seventy-eight as an office warehouse, and the first CO for the property was in nineteen eighty. If we'll look at the screen up here. Wrong slideshow. There we go. Okay, this is the property. Uh, it is across three different lots, but the prop, the part that we're concerned about is the southern portion of the building. This is the submittal by the applicant showing the parking going east and west across the property. This is an aerial from February two thousand one. This is the structure here. As you notice, there's parking along Delonte and along the south portion of the building. This is from October two thousand seven. If you notice, the difference in the aerial is there's an addition that was done on the south portion, uh, that we do not have a permit on, and if you look at two thousand nine, there's another little addition on the west side of the building. This inhibits the, uh, parking that can be utilized on the, on the property, uh, which is restricted just to Delonte along the street. And this is the way it currently sits for the most part. Facing north from Delonte towards Midway, facing south from Midway and Delonte, to the west facing the building, this is pretty much the dividing line of the tenant space, and facing east across the street. I'm available for any questions? Oh, um, as far as the mailout, there were two in favor, no objection, two opposed, and two returned to sender, uh, from the mailout from January the tenth. If you have any questions, I'm available, the applicant-
What the two opposed about?
Uh, one of them was inadequate parking for this type of business, and the other one is inadequate parking and maneuvering area on the subject site.
Do you think we have the, uh, will be the problem for the future business here, or no?
That's the concern of the neighboring, uh, property owners.
Yeah. But as you look at the, the map- and the area, you think we have a problem with that?
Um- Um, I believe that some of the problems, well, if we look at the parking layout, what they're proposing, the applicant says that they will not have a problem because they have three tenants, but any future use if the tenant changes could be a potential problem.
Okay. I'm ready for a council member. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mrs. Bachelor. Did I understand correctly that there is some structure on there that are non-compliant?
This white area here on the south that wraps around and that one right there, we do not have a permit on showing when it was built. So it's a illegal addition at some point in the past.
Do you think it, uh, was it done under the current owner or is that hard to pinpoint?
Hard to pinpoint other than the aerials. This is from oh-one and obviously the structure wasn't there and you see parking along the south side. Uh, aerial oh-seven, so somewhere in that six-year period it appeared.
Thank you, Mrs. Bachelor.
Thank you, Ms. Brown and Councilman Grow.
Yeah, Councilman Brown was getting it. So what can we do to enforce? Get that, I'm, I'm, I know we're getting off a little reservation, but I guess we're gonna have a plan to enforce.
The, the structure is there. We can't go back in time to remedy it. Um, but we can address the concerns of the parking that the neighboring property owners have.
Okay. And do, I guess this is gonna be more for the, uh, applicant about how they get these vehicles in? Are they coming in on a, on a semi, on a car loaded?
That'd be a question for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Any more question from council member?
Not, not for Ms. Bachelor, but for the applicant.
Ms. Nun, please.
Is there any room there for expansion for the parking lot?
Only if, um, this was removed to match up with what was there in oh-one. Which we have talked to them about, uh, the property owner's representative about previously.
And that would be the remedy?
That would be a remedy.
Okay, thank you.
For some uses.
Any more question from council? You have Ms. Brown, Grow?
Well, I went down there and I saw that there's some Warrior Stockyards business and so there's a number of businesses in there.
Uh, basically the building is, is dual occupancy and the training for Warrior Stockyards, they applied for a CO, but it was not approved. So I don't know why they're operating at this point.
And so I would imagine that would have a number of people that would show up that have cars that would suck up all the parking?
Potentially depending on what their hours are if they conflict with each other.
Okay, thank you. I guess more questions for the applicant.
Any more question? If not, I will open the, uh, public hearing against this item. Anyone would like at the seven twenty-six, and anyone in audience would like to speak against this on it? Please come forward. Go ahead, so please state your name.
My name is, my name is Roy Sullins, eighty-three oh-five Thorne Dyke Drive, North Richland Hills. Uh, then I have a question. How many parking places are in front of this particular building?
Well, what the applicant has proposed, this is their site plan showing seventeen spaces total.
Yeah, but the sixteen, I only counted thirteen plus two, two handicap for the whole front when I went by there.
And this is what they submitted to us, so that's what we're-
Well, how can they use a parking if that's not their, if they're not the tenant down there?
That's a good question for the applicant.
So how many, how many parking places are in front of this applicant's place?
What they're proposing is the sixteen shown here.
That won't-
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's a problem. Uh, I think the council needs to find out how many employees this tenant has and how many parking places this tenant has in front of his building. Uh, I have no problem with, uh, auto repair or auto storage if there's no outside parking overnight. I think that auto repair and auto storage should be required to have outside storage. And the outside storage, in my opinion, should be behind a solid blind fence. And if this tenant has enough parking places for his employees and if nobody out there overnight, over, over, no cars overnight and any cars behind a blind fence, I have no problem with it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Ms. Brown? Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Trey Fowler, I was able to be at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and there was a great, uh, lengthy debate and discussion on this. Part of the problem with this, if I couldn't, Ms. Bachelor, if you don't mind. Part of the problem that we have, and Councilmember Grow, I spoke with you yesterday about circulation and maneuverability. Um, that's probably the biggest issue that we have is, is when y'all are granting these conditional uses. Council has the option or the opportunity to place stipulations on each one of these businesses, especially under conditional use. Uh, Mr. Westfall, I don't believe that the use that he's presenting or what he presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission, unless it's changed, is, and to me is acceptable as a neighbor, own property on both sides of this. Uh, the problem I do have though is under the conditional use, if y'all as a council don't place a stipulation that it doesn't continue or it doesn't carry forward to the next tenant, then we have a tenant that moves in that's a garage or an auto shop that you have no control over. So if you're going to consider this and pass it, I would personally recommend that y'all have stipulations and you can make any stipulation you want on this in order to be cognizant of what the neighbors need. Uh, and, and the biggest part, as I said, was if you can see, as Ms. Bachelor pointed out, uh, the subject property is right here. The sixteen places, as Mr. Sullins has said, are encompassing all this, this area. Um, if you look at our parking requirements, they're parked in the front setback, which is, I believe, not, not an option, uh, according to zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance requires that all maneuverability needs to take place within that property. Am I correct in that, Ms. Bachelor? What we have is this is Mr. Dennis, he has, he's in opposition. His property, as you can see, he can circulate all his vehicular traffic within his own property. This is my property. All of this encompasses, this is all my property. Um, one of the problems that we have, that, that's a huge problem down here now, is we're having eighteen-wheeler parking or, or coming in perpendicular to these properties. And what they're doing is they're blocking traffic. They're coming in and they're having to get perpendicular to be able to back into different facilities simply because we're allowing them as, as a board to overbuild and not have any, not have any allowance for maneuverability. So like I said, the, I don't have a problem with Mr. Westfall if his presentation is the same as he had done during the, during the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I would recommend that the council put the stipulation that, um, auto repair not be carried forward, that the conditional use be applied only to that tenant and not move forward after that tenant vacates because then you cannot control it. Then you, they can have, they can do a full repair service and as many cars as they want outside everything else and then we're gonna end up in a problem. There's already a problem down there right now. You can't get in and out of that area at all. It's just a matter of time until there's a, a major traffic situation as far as potential fatality or whatever. But to help prevent that, I think that, you know, we could, you could work with the applicant as well as the, the tenants and the residents that are already down there and the businesses that are already in place, but not allow it to do the things like no outside storage overnight, you know, the things that are required or that staff may have recommended. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, sir.
Again, again, I ask that the council find out how many employees this company is gonna have there and how many parking places in front of his property only. Think you need to do that tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, uh, Ms. Bachelor, either applicant here today? Would you please come forward and state your name, please, sir?
My name is Stephen Westfall and I'm the applicant. Um, to answer some of the questions, um, we have just put in nine parking spots in the front of my spot. Um, I have three employees, including myself, at all times. Uh, we're a small growing company. We're not speeding up fast. Um, in the five years that I plan on being in the building or longer, um, I would only hope to maybe hire one employee, another mechanic. Um, other than that, that'd be the potential of our growth. Um, to another, solve another question, there is outside storage with the blind fence. That's to the left of the property, pretty decent size if I needed to put anything outside. But, um, also to help, another question is we don't store anything outside. Uh, no cars overnight. Um, we have a lot of nicer, higher-end cars, so we can't take that risk either.
In your application, you put in here light truck repair. What kind of truck is it?
Light truck would be like an F-150, a smaller passenger truck, not a utility truck or a work truck. Um, it'd be like considered, we just wanted to cover all bases because if there's a Chevy fifteen-hundred, F-150, um, your basic smaller trucks, non-diesel, we don't do any diesel repair.
What if they have a trailer hook up to the F-150? You have the space for that?
Well, they'd be our vehicles. I don't do outside public work, so nobody would, I would have my own trailer and it wouldn't be me. Um, we don't have trailers like that. We don't use eighteen-wheelers to answer your question. Cars coming on wrecker singly at a time. The building has enough maneuverability in the front to be able to turn the wrecker all the way around, stab the car into the building, and pull out safely.
And what the operation hour? You not work all night?
Monday through Friday, we do eight to six.
Yes, sir. And you, uh, promise not stores the vehicle on the street or outside the fence, right?
At all, not, and everything in an allotted parking spot if we were to use them all, but I-
You have enough for inside and outside?
Nine, there's only three of us there at all times and there's nine parking spots available, so that leaves a little bit of growth room. Um, and if it needed to go more, like I said, there's the outside storage unit on the side, um, that has the blind fence, so it's covered.
And plus, uh, talking about repair and shop, do you have, do any light bodywork, spray paint at all?
We don't do any, any bodywork or paint. We subcontract that out also over here in Halton City. Um, it's Nova Body Shop over here off Silvania Street. They do all of our work, so we don't do any of that in-house.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, this applicant, anyone have any question?
Yeah. How many vehicles do you expect to be working on simultaneously?
We hold anywhere from about eight to max fifteen cars. That'd be on a high number fifteen. Um, we turn cars around usually within two weeks, so they come and go.
And so how you're, how are you obtaining these vehicles?
I buy them to the auction or banks, repos, or eBay, anywhere I can get them usually.
Okay, so you don't expect to have a gooseneck?
No.
Trailer?
Uh, we do own a gooseneck trailer ourselves. It would be in the storage yard and it wouldn't come out. We bring it out maybe once a year for very random things. We don't use it to haul cars. We just happen to own it.
Because-
Um, if it doesn't need to be on the property, I can pay for it to be stored somewhere else.
Cause that's my concern because I was tooling down three seventy-seven and there was this semi-truck with one of the double stack haul haulers offloading in the turning lane in front of-
We don't have that many cars haul at once. So, yeah, they, they come singly on an individual wrecker, um, on a flatbed. We don't use an eighteen-wheeler or any kind of gooseneck big trailer. Our gooseneck's only thirty feet. It's a small one-car hauler.
Yeah, but I don't think, I would have to defer to Councilwoman Nun because she was in the transportation business and so she understands turning radiuses and all that. So I would have to defer to her expertise. But to me, that doesn't look like it's gonna be, if you did, let's say you did expand to getting multiple vehicles because you, you know, you, you purchased four vehicles at an auction. That's realistic.
I individually, I buy about six a week.
Okay, so you buy six. So I would think that it's cheaper to throw them up on a single trailer, um, vehicle.
They're impaired vehicles and so you can't drive them like that and so they have to go on an individual wrecker that can put the flatbed down, wench can pull it up. There's gonna be like, a control arm could be out. It could have a couple of flat tires, um, small imperities that are gonna keep that from being able to go on to those double stack haulers or anything longer than that, like that.
Okay, so these gonna be wrecked title vehicles?
No, they're clean titled vehicles. They're just being fixed. Um, for instance, you wreck a rental car?
Yep.
The rental car company doesn't fix it. You take it to the auction, I buy it.
Okay.
There's small wrecks, things like that. Anything with salvage title, we don't do. We use a clean title only. Um, like I said, we hold newer car vehicles, fifteens, sixteens, seventeens, eighteens. We're just now pushing into nineteenth. Um, you'd be shocked how fast they blow a motor in one of those, but they did.
And, uh, parts, are you gonna keep an inventory of parts in there?
Uh, no, mostly, um, what we do is quick interchange stuff and we have, we pick up the part and we return the part, usually all within the same week. Um, I have a small delivery company, LKQ. It's a big company, but they bring their small trucks over. Um, they can back into our shop. They'll place a door or a motor, whatever I need, and then on Wednesday they come and pick it back up.
And then?
The damaged part.
And then flammable fluids will be stored?
We don't store gas or anything like that necessarily. Um, we do do oil because we have to change the oil on these motors sometimes like that. I have a company now that I use them. They give me their barrels. They come by once a month and they empty the barrels. It's the service I pay for and they're stored in their non-flammable containers and stuff like that. And we keep them, of course, in a good area and everything.
Okay, okay. And, and is that sprinklered? Is it, so it's not, it's a non-sprinkler?
We don't use any heavy machinery. The heaviest thing we use is the auto lift. That's the, that's, we don't do no cutting, no welding, no any kind of fabrications like that.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, so, um, Madam Thompson.
Yes, uh, you mentioned that you would probably be here about five years. What is your anticipated growth or what, what are you expecting?
Um, like I mentioned, um, it probably, the only thing I could see us growing in the next five years is to maybe hire another mechanic. Um, that's about the only way I see, cause we're a small business. Um, I don't need a big, huge, I'm not Don Davis or Vandergriff. I'm not a big company like that. And so, um, our growth in the next five years, I couldn't imagine us being more than one more employee. That'd be a total of four of us.
So your anticipation though is staying in this building?
It's a great location for us. It's a good intermediate for where we do our business. It's really why we're intrigued in it because it just, it helps our everyday productivity, being able to be close. Right now, we're about thirty minutes from the area and it's just tough. Um, with what, with what we do, because if I had to take a car back and have to do something to it, that's a long drive or have to have it towed again. So it's nice to be close in that area. So our goal is to be there for a good little bit, yeah, and not have to move.
And you said you take your automobiles once you finish, is it the Fort Worth Auction?
Yeah, right over here off, um, Trinity and Collins, Manheim DFW. As soon as the car's ready, within twenty-four hours, the car is driven to the auction and checked in. They don't, we don't keep them on property because I can't sell it on property. That's not the way I work my business.
And so there'll be no vehicles once you're finished with them? You would not be storing them outside?
No, nothing outside, no for sale signs. We won't do sale, we don't do sales to the public. I don't sell the cars to the public at all. No public service. It's pretty much a private wholesale business.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Next, Councilman, uh, Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Strong. First of all, I'd like to thank you for choosing Halton City to come to and, and setting up your business. How long have you owned this building?
We don't own the building. Um, I brought the landlord with me here, um, but I don't own the building. I'm trying to lease it.
Okay. Uh, I really have a problem with this out of compliance deal. I'd like to get down to who did this out of compliance, being a contractor that you-
I do know that the two additions were done before the new owner now has it.
Okay.
It was done, when he bought it, it was already there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Westfall.
Thank you, Ms. Brown and, uh, Councilman Madam Nun.
Thank you. Um, how do you get into the, uh, blind storage area? I- is it off Midway or?
If you see over to the left over here, right now it's not blind. We have promised to make it where we cover it, but that is an actual fence on the far left over here. Um, you can kinda see that bus sticking out the nose of it right there, but that's a area, I'm not good with size, but it's a pretty decent area, you know, if you could host plenty of parking in there actually, but you can't put the spots because of the turn radius of what you're supposed to do with the spots. But that's the side area to the left and we plan on fully paneling that fence to where it becomes a blind.
Okay, but you can drive through there and then make a turn in a normal vehicle?
Yes.
Okay. And then how would you get your gooseneck trailer out of there?
That would easily, well, the trailer's only about thirty feet, so it fits in that area right there. That would be the only time in situations, or it could go in the doors, but in this front parking lot area, what we'd call it right now, I guess, um, it's completely moved around with the gooseneck. A gooseneck, I'm sure as you know, has a lot more maneuverability. You can do a ninety-degree turn with it. And so we would either store it inside in one of the things or it would go inside that thing, uh, in the blind storage area. And we can pull it in forward, we can pull it in outwards. I have a dolly to turn it around, many of different ways to maneuver it, um, without having to block the street. It would never be parked outside or out in the street, well, outside the fence area.
Okay.
Um, it's nothing serious. It's just a single car hauler that we put our little four-wheelers on when we like to go off-roading on the weekends.
Okay, all right. Um, you said you have no diesel repair. Um, see, I wrote down something down here. Are you gonna do anything to the exterior, uh, painting it or anything?
Um, if by request you would like so, um, we can venture into that. I understand the color's a little outdated there. Um, once you get closer, it's not too bad, but I can see the off, off eggshell white isn't the most pleasant. Um, at least it ain't popping pink or anything, but, you know, but whatever.
Oh, a neutral tone would be nice.
No problem. We could beautify the front area. We talked about, you know, putting barrels with flowers and stuff like that. We could make it nicer.
Okay, all right. Um, now, do you guys collect sales tax on your vehicles?
No, we do not. I'm a wholesale strictly business.
Okay.
But I do like to supply a lot of the couple, well, not a lot, a couple of your local dealers around here. Um, MC, MC, um, Willborn Motor Company, they're all very close dear friends of me. They purchase cars from me and they charge sales tax. They purchase cars from me and they charge sales tax. And so it's nice to me, for me to be close to them too.
Okay.
So they can easily catch my new inventory. They can see what they need.
Alright. Sound like a very enterprising young man. Thank you so much.
I'm trying.
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Ms. Nun and, uh, anyone, no question? There's still a public hearing. Anyone in the audience still want to speak about item number seven? I see Nun, thank you so much, sir, and I will close the public hearing at seven forty-four. And now the item number seven ready for motion.
I, I, I just have a question for Ms. Bachelor.
Go ahead.
Okay, my concern is what happens after five years? So is there anything that we can put on here to say that it's just Mr. Westland's?
We had, uh, addressed that once before with Cash America on the pawn shop. We can't make it specific to a tenant. So the, uh, conditional use permit is allowing a use for the property, not just the tenant that presented it here tonight.
Could we do a planned development and-
That would be the same situation.
Same situation, so there's no way that we can-
Restrict it to-
Restrict it, so after five years it would be open up for auto repair. And then we could have, because I've driven around there today to look at this property and just right down the block, right across from, right at the, basically at the corner of Midway and Carson, there's cars spilling out and they've been there for a long time.
Right.
And that's my fear that we're gonna have over here. So.
Councilmember Grow?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. As, uh, Mr. Fowler stated, uh, you, you can put reasonable conditions on the conditional use permit. This is similar to a zoning change. It requires the ordinance that you're considering tonight. Uh, the conditional use permit does run with the land. It is binding on any future owners of the property, regardless of whether Mr. Westfall or somebody else acquires the use of the property. There will, there will be such to the same terms and conditions as you put in a conditional use permit. If you've got any particular issues that you want to try to tighten up based on what Mr. Westfall testified to, you certainly can include those in your motion tonight and they can be added, uh, tonight or before second reading of the ordinance if, if you like.
Yeah, but my issue is our enforcement is, you know, not a hundred percent. You know, we got cars that are spilled out and, and that are in clear violation and, you know, we're just not, right now, we're not, not, um, cleaning up what we have. And so my fear is adding more to it is just, you know, you know, we finally got fully staffed and so I would like to, me personally, I would like to see particularly District Two, because that's where I used to patrol a lot, to see that place, um, get squared away before we add to the problem. So, that's where I'm leaning.
Thank you, Ms. Row and, uh, any more question? If not, the item number seven's rea- ready for motion? Go ahead, Ms. Row.
I make a motion that we disapprove the conditional use permit. Now, yeah, I make a motion that we, uh, disapprove this conditional use permit. Thank you.
And? Anyone on second? Um, Council Madam Nun.
I'd like to make an alternate motion, but I don't know how to word it. Um, I would like to, um, pass it on the first reading, but I would like the, the restrictions, um, as we discussed earlier and actually as Mr. Fowler suggested. Can we pass it today and then come up with, with the restrictions for next time?
Yes, you could do that. Whatever direction you can give the staff to draft the, the conditions so that we can have those written out by second reading, you certainly can do that.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second, ma'am?
No, I'm making, I'm making the alternate motion. So now I need a second.
You need to ask, there's a second for Councilmember Nun's motion.
Any, uh, second for Council Madam Nun? Ms. Wee?
I second Nun's motion.
Please, Russia, you vote. If you don't have any question? Okay, the item number seven, six to one. And we need to go back to the table.
Um, what restrictions would y'all like to see aside from the twenty-one that we have on Exhibit A of the ordinance?
Again, whatever direction you can give to the staff, you know, whether you, you want, uh, landscaping, whether you want painting, whether you want, uh, some issues with regard to parking or whatever, and then we can wrap those up before second reading.
Okay, okay, for sure. Was it up to me or?
Janine, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, my suggestion would be, um, that fence, uh, for sure, to make sure that that's blocked. Painting and, um, that we, again, the, the five year, I'm confused on that. The, the present, um, the present tenants, we could only limit it to light, um, light auto repair?
Auto and light truck repair and vehicle storage are the two uses they're, um, requesting.
Okay. For the, for the future tenants also?
Yes, it goes, it stays with the land.
Okay.
Um, so on Exhibit A, item number twenty already addresses the exterior paint. If you wanna be more specific, we can write that in there.
No, just a neutral color.
Okay.
Landscaping, I don't care about. The fence, I do want that privacy fence. And the, the fence should be the city standards. Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Um, so number fifteen addresses commercial delivery vehicles limited to those able to maneuver on site and not back out or park onto Delonte. No eighteen wheelers permitted. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more, Ms. Nun?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And any more? Ms. Wee, go ahead, sir.
Nothing on that. I do have a question though. Um, due to the medical issue I had a while ago, can we move thirteen and fourteen up? Um, so I can do as the firemen have requested and, and head up to the hospital? Can we move that up real fast? After we finish seven, can we move up to thirteen and fourteen?
We will, uh, move number thirteen and fourteen up there, next to seven, right?
Yeah, can we do that real fast?
Yes.
Thank you.
We are moving the, uh, item number thirteen and fourteen after the item number seven. And at this time, any more, Council, you have any resignation now? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Wee.
I do. I need to, as far as the E D C, um, board, I need to remove Wes Hart from the E D C.
Say again?
Wes Hart from the E D C.
Wes Hart from E D C, remove?
Making a motion or motion?
Yeah. And we have second? No, okay, Russia. We, please, Russia, you vote. No, we don't need second. Okay, go ahead. Russia, you vote, please. Okay. Okay, we got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, yes. One abstain and one no voting by Councilman Brow, no voting. And Madam Nun's abstain. Okay, approved. Now, number fourteen. Yes, but we already have enough to approve. Yeah. Okay. Number fourteen, apporman and reaporman. Any council, any one to do it? If, uh, Mr. Wee, go ahead, sir.
I need to appoint Troy Dunn to the E D C, please.
Okay, Ms., uh, what was it?
E D C.
Okay, Troy Dunn, Ms. Troy Dunn for E D C. Please, Russia, you vote. Okay, unanimous approval. Ms. Troy Dunn, thank you. Ms. Lynn Thompson, Madam Thompson? No? Okay. Okay, I have one. I believe Mr. K. Romich, if I pronounce Romich. I pronounced your name correctly? Say again, ma'am? Rom, Romich, yeah. I bet you, you can't pronounce my name correctly anyway. We are even, right? Uh, I would nominate Mr. Remich for the beautification board. Please, Russia, you vote. Okay, we got, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we got unanimous approval and welcome aboard, ma'am. Thank you for the service. Okay, uh, we will contact you this week to let you know more about the, what you're doing. Now we go back to number eight, the, uh, Ms. Bachelor again. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, the applicant has requested a continuance on this item until the February twelfth Planning and Zoning Commission, so they can establish a mutual access easement and a shared parking agreement. But since it was advertised in the Star Telegram, I need a motion to that effect. Continuance.
Okay, motion, can you? Okay, uh-
We need a motion.
Ms. Thompson?
Certain dates, right?
Uh, yes. P and Z will be February twelfth and Council will be February twenty-fifth.
Continue to the twenty-fifth, Ms. Thompson?
Okay, I'd like to move that we do a continuance on this till February the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Madam Thompson, and second? Ms. Row?
Yes, for a second.
Okay, if, and any question or comment? If not, go ahead, uh, Russia, you vote, please. Oh, I, I didn't. Okay. Bob?
Bren.
Bren? Okay, just print out the, uh, we got, uh, six. Approved. Thank you. And now? We start number nine, resolution number R two twenty, two zero one nine zero zero four nine zero one. Ms. Camacho? You're next to me. Okay, go ahead.
What we have is, uh, on January fourteenth, twen- two thousand nineteen, the City Council approved the resolution to call for a general election on May fourth, twenty nineteen, and of the mayor's position, as well as councilmember places one, two, and seven. On January twenty-first, councilmember Bob Watkins in place five filed for his candidacy as mayor. Section three point oh three of the Charter states that if a person holding an elective office of the city becomes a candidate for nomination or election to any elective public office other than the office then held, the person automatically resigns the city office. The city shall, council shall declare the office vacant and proceed to fill the office as provided in section three point oh six of this charter. Therefore, since there is an additional vacancy, a special election for place five, I have place three on the cover sheet, but place five needs to be added to the general election on May fourth, two thousand nineteen, as required by section three oh six of the charter, which states, "In the event of a vacancy occurring in the office of mayor or city councilmember for any cause whatsoever, a special election shall be held at the next state uniform election date that allows time for holding the election as provided state law." So then you will have now the positions in the general election will be the mayor, councilplaces one, two, and seven, which will be for a two-year term, and the special election for councilmember place five will be the remainder for the unexpired term of one year. So we knew have an amended resolution before the council for them to consider. The election costs again have not known be, uh, because of the political, participating political subdivisions and the county does not yet know how many entities will be participating. So according to the charter, we do need to call a special election to, uh, for the vacancy of place five.
Thank you, Ms. Camacho, and, uh, anyone have a question?
Councilmember Grow?
Councilman Grow?
Uh, not a further question, but I'm, I'm making a motion that we approve resolution R dash two zero one nine dash zero zero four dash zero one.
Thank you, Councilman Grow. How about second, Ms. Lynn? Ms. Thompson?
That would be for a second.
Ms. Nun had a question?
Ms. Nun?
That was for a second.
Okay, if you don't have any question or comment, go ahead, Russia, you vote, please.
Unanimous, okay.
Okay, item number nine, unanimous approval. Thank you. How, now we move to item number ten. I would like to ask Mr. Steve Chapman and Attorney Alicia Ray. Go ahead, sir. Welcome aboard.
Good evening, Mayor Protim and members of the council. Glad to be here tonight. Ms. Cray is going to come forward. I have been serving as the Halton City Charter Review Committee Chairman and we've had a-
Excuse me, Steve, before you go further, uh, I need to, I forgot to mention that now that the council has called a special election, candidates can file for that special, special election position, place number five, tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. The, the candidacies will be, uh, can be accepted then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We had an outstanding group of people who volunteered their time and efforts to help out our city to continue to improve in reviewing our city charter. We started on October first, where we elected our chair and vice chair and discussed and set out our parliamentary procedures. We had thirteen subsequent meetings ending on January the sixteenth. There's a lot of information to get through tonight and I wanna be as succinct as I possibly can with regard to the materials. Uh, we didn't put together a PowerPoint. I'm actually putting the material on the screen for those that might be in the audience, but you all have a handout, uh, of the charter review and some additional materials that we'll, we'll talk about in just a moment. But I'll also be remiss if it didn't take time to recognize not only the, um, the committee members, but several who attended the meetings and were very beneficial to our efforts. Starting with, uh, vice chair for the committee, um, chair for the subcommittee and representing place two, Ms. Marion Hilliard. Um, Ms. Hilliard took over as vice chair for member Chris Bethel, uh, from place four, who had a, a job change and had resigned position, uh, back in November. For place one, we had James, uh, Jimbo White, who also, uh, served as chairman for the last Charter Review Committee. Again, place two, uh, Marion Hilliard, place three, myself. Place four, uh, Britt Ford, who replaced again Chris Bethel. Place five, uh, former mayor Bill Lanford. Place six, former mayor Jack Lewis. Place seven, Don LaMaster, and place eight, Suzanne Norris, and council vote let it carry away. All of these committee members are currently or have in the past served our city on boards, council, and/or as mayor. Of course, uh, I do want to, to, um, give my appreciation to City Secretary Art Camacho, who did the dirty work of getting all this information collected and put together for us, as well as Donna Pliska, who had to sit in for Art, uh, for a meeting that he was unable to attend. And just as a matter of perspective, these are the documents that I have from the, the committee, uh, that we reviewed, and that doesn't even include the materials that you have in front of you tonight. So there was a, a great deal of information that we needed to go through, uh, in order to be, uh, effective at this. And I want to give considerable, um, appreciation to Alicia Gray as, as, uh, as we have here to the left. We did ask her to be here specifically tonight to discuss a number of the issues that we're going to be presenting to you, um, from our city's attorney's office, but without her help, a large part of the recommendations being presented or, or considered, uh, here tonight would not have even been made possible. Having been a member of the last charter review committee, where we piecemeal information back and forth, uh, between the city attorney and the committee with a great deal of difficulty, having Mister Gray attend all of the committee members, excuse me, meetings, was tremendously beneficial. So for your consideration, that of any future city council. It is my opinion, and I believe most of the other committee members, that no future charter review be done without the presence of the city attorney's office at every meeting. The recommendations from the city's attorney's office will help, uh, Halton City to ensure that our charter will continue to stand the test of scrutiny. Also in attendance and leading a voice to our proceedings were council member and council liaison Lynn Thompson, council members Walter Grow, Janine Nun, and Bob Watkins, city manager Keith Lane, assistant city manager Rex Phelps, police chief Cody Phillips, fire chief Brian Jacobs, HR director Tony Beckett, as well as members of the respective associations for both police and fire, and director of finance Jennifer Fung also attended. In addition, we had several, uh, interested, um, citizens who also attended these meetings. So there was a lot of people that had input into what we are bringing to you tonight for consideration. In addition, during this time, we formed a subcommittee, uh, again chaired by Miss Hilliard and including Miss Norris and Mister LaMaster, to review information on the possible formation of an ethics committee. They met four times on their own, in addition to attending the thirteen regular committee meetings. Their goal was to review and bring back information to the full committee through scrutinizing other city charters such as Fort Worth, Bedford, Keller, LaToga, and others. Basically, six bullet points. What do other city charters have regarding an ethics committee? What is the purpose of those commissions? What are the powers of those commissions? What is the process for the commission to hear a complaint? What are the remedies of the complaints if it's found to be true? And who has the ultimate power to make decisions regarding the case that's been brought forward? This information was then reviewed by the full committee for consideration, and we are making our recommendations based on those discussions. We're going to discuss that as we go through the details of the committee recommendations through the documents that you have. Also, in specific to Article eleven, the committee held one full meeting to receive information from HR director Tony Beckett, working in direct relationship with Chief Cody Phillips, Chief Jacobs, and members of the associations to make specific recommendations for changes, and the committee is bringing forward those recommended changes based on the input from that group. Again, we'll go through those details as we get to those specific articles. And I would encourage everyone who is listening to this presentation to keep the following five points in mind and to vote accordingly. Number one, the overwhelming majority of recommendations are needed to keep the city within the legal requirements and come from the attorney's office, not from the committee members. All of the recommendations for Article eleven come straight from our police and fire departments. Director of Finance Jennifer Fung asked for changes to Article five, section five point oh six, and the remaining recommendations come from extensive research of other successful cities within our region. In fact, the only changes that the committee is recommending outside of those from the city's attorney's office, Article eleven from the police and fire, and from Jennifer Fung, are in three places. Article two, section two point oh three, subsection five, and Article ten, section ten point oh two A, subsections A and B, as they relate to the ethics commission, and the third is Article three, section three point oh one, for term limits. Number five, this committee body comes from every part of the political spectrum. So I ask for both council and the voting public to not be influenced by poorly researched social media information, if it's been researched at all, considering the fact that this is the first time that this city council is hearing this information and it, that it's being made public. I also have, at the end of our presentation, some other recommendations from the committee that are specifically outlined, uh, within these changes for the charter review, and I'll get to those as we, as I, we end our conversation. Again, a lot of material to go through. So the, the information that you have in front of you tonight with this booklet, um, the changes that we are recommending are in red. Anything that is strictly black, we are not recommending any changes to. So as an example, from page one and page two, we start with Article one, section one point oh one for boundaries, through page two, Article two, powers, general powers adopted. You see no red, we're not recommending any changes. So in effect, the first recommendation from the committee starts in section two point oh three with the powers of city council. And, uh, for those of you in the audience, hopefully I can get... Eh, maybe not. Can you help me, the, the slides are not progressing here? I'm sure it's me. Turn it on, it's always powerful. Uh, again, page three, you see the words, "An ethic commissions," an ethics commission. The committee is recommending that we allow this city council to provide for an ethics commission. However, we are not outlining specifics around that ethics commission. We intend to leave that to the city council to develop that as far as form and powers. It simply gives you, as a council, sitting council, the opportunity to form an ethics committee. I want to jump to section ten, if I could, because we are adding to that that are related, and I'll come back to where we are. Ten point oh two A for ethics policy. And you'll see the changes in subsection A, "The city council by ordinance shall adopt and maintain and enforce an ethics policy entitled the Municipal Code of Ethics." We wanted to make sure that that was specifically outlined in our charter. "Governing elected officials, members of city boards and commissions, and city employees, which shall address, but is not as limited to contractual relationships within the city. City council from time to time amend the ethics policy as the city council determines is appropriate." So you'll see, again, only those portions that are outlined in red or in red font, uh, are the recommended changes. Additionally, for subsection B, "The city council shall enforce the ethics policy utilizing the ethics commission as it applies to the city council board and commission members." I won't go through the rest of that detail. The, the point here is that this is the general application of allowing the city council to develop an ethics commission, and then sets out for you an opportunity to do that. But again, that puts it in your hands to form both the body, functions, powers, and all of that that's designed around, uh, that ethics commission, should you choose to, to do that. So let's, let's go back. We've covered that on page three. On page four, there is both recommendations from the committee and language cleanup from the city's attorney's office with regard to the application of these recommendations. And basically, if I could read through it, "A city council member who has served as a council member regardless of place for three consecutive terms shall not again be eligible to become a candidate for or to serve as a council member until the next general election after the third consecutive term has expired." So again, some cleanup language there, uh, but it is specific to the, the term limits. With B, again, term limits, "A mayor who has served as mayor for five consecutive terms as mayor shall not again be eligible to become a candidate for or to serve in that office until the next general election after the fifth consecutive term has expired." Terms served as a council member shall not be included in the calculation of terms under this subsection. Council members may serve five consecutive terms if two or more terms are served as mayor. After the fifth combined consecutive term, the council member shall not be eligible to serve in an elected office of council member or mayor until the next general election." And we've removed the current language below that, as you can see, that's, that's lined out. Again, language cleanup as used in this section. Uh, recommendations from the attorney's office, "Any length of service within a two-year term that exceeds three hundred and sixty days is a term served, and council member means places one through seven and does not mean mayor." So again, for your consideration. The language in three point oh two, I, I don't know that I want to go through everything in detail here. Uh, again, this is for your, your consideration, you'll need to read through this and, uh, make yourselves acquainted with this language as we go from first reading into second reading. Um, but I do want to point out that, uh, and this is all a, a cleanup from the city's attorney's office. With the exception of seven, though, I do want to point out that we moved, uh, that portion of seven to ten point oh two A, not in whole, uh, but in essence. In other words, it is a change of language, uh, removing that subsection seven and changing the language to fit it into ten point oh two A. Mister Gray, any comments with regard to that? Okay, all right. So she's here to keep me in line and, and hopefully not speak improperly with, with regard with what we've got. So then, uh, we move, uh, to section four point oh one. But before I move, uh, into four point oh one, I want to kind of stop for a moment, get a, a breath of air here and ask if there are any questions so far with what you've seen. Okay, let's move on to section four point oh one. Again, uh, recommendation from the city's attorney's office in cleaning up the language so that, um, again, we're, we're more in line with the law today, uh, that we don't put ourselves in harm's way with our current language that's in the charter and, and keeps us where we are in compliance with Texas state law as need be. So in general elections, is the, the term that's being added to subsection A and the complete paragraph in subsection B, "Special elections." "City council may order an election for any municipal purpose and shall order special elections to fill vacancies pursuant to citizen positions or measures as promptly as possible while complying with state and federal requirements." Section four point oh three, this is pretty clean if you look at it, uh, and what we're attempting to do. The language in subsection A, if you'll notice, the, the first part of the, of the red language says, that it is filing with the city secretary all required state applications. So it takes out all of our current language that's in the charter that could potentially be in contrast to what actually is in state law, and just gives us that verbiage that keeps it clean as to, this is what it, it, it happens in state law. So it then becomes, "Any qualified person may have his or her name placed on the official ballot as a candidate for the office of mayor or council member by filing with the city secretary all required state applications." So again, it's clean, it keeps us from having all that language in the charter that's simply not necessary, and makes sure that we are in compliance once, once again. Page nine, uh, subparagraph B. Again, attorney language cleanup, uh, if you see the red language, and if I could, let me see if I can take this a little further over to page nine, I apologize for not keeping the, the audience in, in mind here. Attorney cleanup in subsection B, uh, which is here, "The requisite number of signatures..." Excuse me, get back over to the mic. Uh, "The requisite number of signatures prescribed by chapter one forty-three of the Texas Election Code as amended." And then the second part of that, "The application must be accompanied by two forms of identification, one being a photo ID," that's the addition. So it's a pretty, uh, easy piece to understand, and then we move to section four point oh six. And we are removing the current language of the paragraph and adding subsections A and B. Again, this is strictly cleanup from the city's attorney's office. Subsection A, "State law and city charter. City elections are governed by the Constitution and laws of the state applicable to municipal elections, except where state law provides that a charter takes precedence, and this charter varies from state law. If state law and this charter fail to provide for some feature of city elections, the city council has the power to provide for the deficiency." Subsection B, "Substantial compliance. No informalities in conducting a city election shall invalidate the election if it is conducted fairly and in substantial compliance with state law where applicable in the charter and the ordinances of the city." Let me stop again and see if there are questions or concerns about what you've seen so far. And I realize this is your, your first opportunity to go through this, so I'm sure there will be questions additionally on, on the second reading, but, uh, as of now, questions or comments? Okay. Yes?
Just on that, when we go up to the requisite number of signatures prescribed by chapter one forty-three?
Yes.
As amended, it, it did say at least, before it said at least fifty, do we just leave it blank because that could change?
Correct.
Is that what we're doing?
Yes, and that's, that's the purpose of, of calling out chapter one forty-three of the Texas Election Code. Once again, the, the fifty could be, uh, could be problematic for us, and this just keeps us in, in with...
Because it could change to two fifty or something like that. Okay, thank you.
And I might elaborate on that, just for the people in the audience. With regard to elections in particular, the, the state legislature controls elections, whether they're city elections or statewide elections, we have to comply with the Texas Election Code. And a lot of the provisions in the current city charter mirrored state law at the time they were adopted. We had an election in the past, the citizens approved the language in the charter, but then the legislature changes the law, and all of a sudden, our charter is inconsistent with state law, so we cannot apply the charter because we're preempted by state law. So a lot of what the current proposal for the citizens to consider is to just make it clear that all elections will be conducted in accordance with the election code, unless the election code specifically allows our charter to have something specific to Halton City, in which case it's addressed in the charter. But, uh, councilmember Nun, you brought up a very good point. Right now, if state law says fifty signatures are required, and we put that in the charter, who knows, this legislative session, they may raise it to two hundred and fifty, and, and immediately, our charter's out of date. So it, it's truly better for us to, to word it in this manner.
And then again, we have to go back through the process of developing a charter review committee, putting that in front of us. So this just keeps it very clean. So again, we're, we're staying away from any verbiage that, uh, could potentially put us in harm's way with, with legal matters.
Alicia, you have a question?
Yes, ma'am, please do.
Uh, the way this legislature, this statutory provision, it's based on the number of votes in the previous election. So based on the number of votes that you had, you could be requiring too little signatures based on the number fifty. So there's not an actual number prescribed by the statute, so that's why we presented it this way.
Thank you, and again, as we go through this, the majority of these recommendations are coming from the city's attorney's office asking us to simply clean up the charter so that we don't have these type of issues where we may suddenly find ourselves, uh, in non-compliance ourselves. So, uh, to... So take that into consideration, both on the city council and for the voters in public. Moving on to section 4.09, the election of the city council, this is new in whole. So this is completely new, again, presented by the attorney's office, subsection A, majority vote required. At an election for mayor or city council member, the candidate who receives the majority of the number of votes cast in the election for each office to be filled is elected. Subsection B, runoff elections. If no candidate receives a majority of city council votes for mayor or particular place number at an election, then the city council shall order a runoff election to be held in accordance with state law. All right, again, questions, concerns? Outstanding.
A question. On this one, you're talking about like three people running and one got like over 50%, right? Is that enough, right? Just like all-- What difference between this one and all charter?
This wasn't addressed previously, it's my understanding from art that this is how that it's already conducted in Halton City. So this just clarifies in the charter that this is how elections are. Take care.
And mayor, under state law, unless the city requires a majority vote, then somebody could be elected by a plurality vote, which means that if you have three members running for office, the person who receives the most votes wins.
Is this a new one?
But no, you currently require a majority vote in Halton City, this is just a clarification of that. But without that requirement, then nobody has to get 50% of the votes. Whoever gets the most votes wins, but with a majority vote, you require at least one candidate to get 50%, more than 50% of the votes in order to be elected.
In other words, our current practice could potentially be challenged, this simply clarifies it for us. I'm sorry, Mr. Watkins?
State law--
Turn on your mic. Bob, turn on your mic.
Yes.
Clarity.
You know what I'm saying.
Yes, unless you put in your charter that it requires a majority vote, then if you have five people running for office and one of them gets one vote more than the rest, then they're elected, no matter how many votes they get.
I like that. It's just me, I've never been in a runoff election, but I know people that have, and it's a mess.
Mr. Watkins? I would dare say it's been a while since you've done any kind of runoff.
Let me understand, so what we've been doing is what this says, but if we don't come right out and state it--
We could be challenged.
Then we'll be operating under state law.
Correct.
Thank you.
We're just putting it in there to say, this is how we're already doing it, but now it's in the charter for clarification. Thank you, again. All right, moving on to section 5.06 for the independent audit. Ms. Fun, if you're still here, would you mind giving us a quick preview of your recommendation on this matter?
Currently, in the charter, we said that every five years we have to change independent auditors. So that is to say, when we have the auditor serve with the city for five years, we have to choose another independent auditor. The existing auditor will not be eligible to be service the city again. So this, the change is that after the five years, we can have the same auditor as long as we go through the bid process and selected the new auditors. So the existing auditor is eligible to be selected again.
Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Much better stated than I could have put that. Again, I think the critical piece here is that, again, they would have to go through that bid process, even though there would not be that formal process, they still have to go back through the bidding process for us. So, okay, and if we are moving then to section, article six, section 6.01, recall authorized. This, again, clearly needs to be changed based on the attorney's input. Our current charter says, "Any council member, council member shall be subject to recall and removal from office by the qualified voters." This changes that to, "The mayor and council members shall be subject to recall and removal from office by the qualified voters." So in other words, previously, the charter didn't outline that the mayor was part of that process for recall, and this simply cleans that up. And for 6.02, the petition for recall, once again, attorney's language cleaning up our charter. The language starts at, "And each petition must contain the information required by chapter 277 of the Texas Election Code as amended for the validity of signatures." So in other words, it takes out all of that information that could potentially be in contrast to the chapter 277 election code and just keeps it clean. 6.07. And I apologize, there's just, again, there's a lot of information to go through here tonight, and hopefully I'll get you out of here before midnight, but we do need to get through this entire process. 6.07, "Election to be called," again, information from the attorney's office, changing the verbiage of "in not less than 45 days" from the date such petition was certified by the city council. It changes that to, "Allow sufficient time to meet the requirements of this charter and state law." For 6.08, same ballots. Now this one, you need to kind of take a look at it for a moment, it's actually very clean, but it's definitely a change, but it's much better if you really read how the language is changing. And that is, in subsection two, immediately to the left of each question, there shall be printed the following words, one above the other in the order indicated. Our current language just says yes and no. The proposal is that we use the term "for the recall of" name of person and against the recall of name of person. So it's very clear to the voting public exactly what they're voting for. So it's not just a yes/no vote, it outlines exactly what they're voting for in each one of those buckets. Mr. Protem?
Yeah, are we sure that we can, since Tarrant County, I guess, does our elections, that they can facilitate this requirement?
Yes.
So they'll be able to, I know they got a digital machine now, and I don't know if they're still using the paper ballots, but I know the last couple of elections have been all digital, and it's just the software, just making sure that the software can handle this.
Yes, this is not that unusual, and they do these types of elections for cities.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, glad I didn't have to answer that question. And in removal of current subsection B, and you can see the information on that being outlined. Moving to page 15, in article seven, subsection, or section 7.02, initiative procedure. This language is very beneficial for our city. And I want to point out that it says, "Qualified voters of the city may initiate legislation." And it now includes, "Accept levying taxes, authorizing the assurance, issuance of bonds or other evidence of indebtedness, setting rates for services, adopting of a budget, any subject where state law requires a public hearing or any other matter of court of competent jurisdiction has determined to be removed from the field of initiative or referendum." Currently, the way our charter is set up, basically, any citizen can bring this information forward, and that creates some pretty significant problems for us. So this is one that I would ask that you take a great deal of time to look through. Certainly contact the city's attorney's office, Wayne or Alicia, in asking your questions on this. But I do think that this is pretty powerful and in the change, and I think that it's something that we should certainly consider. So just wanted to throw that out there for your consideration. On the next page, on page 16, again, in section 7.02, the attorney's change is here. The word, the verbiage is, "As soon as possible, subject to the Texas Election Code." And it's no different than the other changes we've been talking about, keeping us out of trouble with a specified number of days. It's just saying, "We want to adhere to the Texas Election Code." In section 7.03 for referendum, the verbiage change is from "shall immediately" to "shall within 10 days." Reconsider such ordinance or resolution. Once again, cleanup of our current language. And seemed to have lost at least three quarters of the audience, so I apologize, but you're stuck with me. On to page 18. And perhaps you want to start back on 17 because it is section 8.01, "Powers of the city as to utilities generally." And taking out the paragraph where it states the city has the power to buy, sell, own, construct, maintain, and operate utilities, and replaces that with subsection A, "City-owned utility." "The city has the following powers: one, to buy, construct, lease, maintain, operate, and regulate public utilities; two, to manufacture, distribute, and sell the output of utility operations; and three, other powers regarding utility services granted under the Constitution and laws of the state; b, services outside city limit. The city may extend utility lines and sell utility services outside the city limits in accordance with state law." Once again, a lot better language for us as opposed to the current language that is in the charter. Let me stop there and see if there's any questions. Mayor Protem, you got anything? Mr. Watkins?
I don't know whether it's a question of you or the attorneys. I'm seeing, I'm seeing an awful lot of verbiage here. In the past, there have been X amount of amendments suggested or propositions or whatever they are. And then there's been a line in there, something to the effect of cleanup, which you've mentioned that word several times. All of this is not going to appear for people to vote on, right? What you're going to have is--
It will have to be outlined section by section, and in order to do that, and that's my understanding of it, is it needs to be outlined section by section so that you're not just blocking it all together and you vote yes or no, and you either wipe it all out or you approve all of it in one place. You're going to have to vote section by section for those changes in order for the voting public to have an opportunity to say, "I like this, I don't like this, I like this," and so on.
Well, excuse me, well, I was going back to what you, you said the same word several times, and that's more or less what the ballot has always said before. Of course, a lot of that was, I was on one with Jack Lewis and I and two or three other people, I don't know, 20 years ago. And we cleaned up, took out all the hers and his and all that. Couple, three or four years later, we went back in and took out some word. Evidently, we didn't clean it all out, so, and at the last charter election, I don't remember. But all I'm going to do is try to get straight in my mind because too much information all at once seems to boggle the mind of the public. And you run the risk of them voting all yes or all no and never knowing what they're voting on. But I just want to make, get it clear in my mind that what you really didn't mean was you may be cleaning it up, but that's not how it's going to be. It's not straightening out, it's not correcting, it's not making it according to state law.
I appreciate your concerns, and I certainly understand your concerns with regarding the voting public and really kind of putting a whole lot of things in front of them at one time. However, I think the significant difference between this particular charter review and perhaps others that we have had in the past, which I have also served on, is the fact that we did in fact have Ms. Gray at every one of those meetings. And what this allowed us to do is to, where we have not had the opportunity, where charter members wouldn't even understand or recognize that there would be a need to clean up this language, and then pass, just, I mean, basically what we did, the last one was, we said, "This is what we would like to change," we passed it over to the attorney's office, they said yes or no, and we come back to the table. This time, however, we are really taking a holistic view of the charter and saying, "Look, there is a need for us to change this language." Rather than continue the chances that this city has a charter that's out of compliance, whether it's with code or Texas state law, whatever those things are. But let's not underestimate our voting public. I think that if they really want to look at this and say, "Here's why we're doing this," then we give them the opportunity to look at this information and say yes or no, rather than saying, "Well, I don't know if they'll understand all that. Let's put this on the ballot," and I'm speaking for myself, just as this particular member, not the committee, but I certainly believe that our voting public has a pretty in-depth understanding of what they're looking at.
Yes, I agree with the, I think the second charter review committee I was on, Mr. Fowler was on it, and Mr. Lewis, and a former mayor, not Jack Lewis, a former mayor, Art Trey, a former mayor said, "Well, we don't need to have this at the same time as a council election because it'll be-- you'll have a bunch of people out there that don't know what they're voting on," and I had a runaway. And just like the Nixon tapes, that part of that meeting disappeared. And I was very unhappy, I got copies of everything, it had completely disappeared somehow or other. But I completely agree, the more people that can look at it, the better. All I was saying was, is if it gets way complicated, you float off into the-- I like the idea of it being this time, and all of it you want to put on there.
So in reference to Nixon and that time, the term would be, "What did they know and when did they know it?" And I think that's, in particular with this case, is that we need to put this in the hands of our voters, allow this to be a huge cleanup, say, "These are the things that are being presented, this is why it's being presented," and give them that opportunity. Mr. Alton?
Yeah, I might also comment, right now, the proposal is to have 22 separate propositions, separate ballot, just to be voted on by the citizens because there are a lot of changes to this charter, and we want the citizens to be able to vote up or down on each of the changes if they want to. We want them to get involved in this. I certainly recommend to the citizens that they actually look at the rewarding, the changes that Mr. Chapman's going through and read. These are attached to the ordinance that you're going to be adopted, and they themselves will explain exactly the language that's being proposed. But we are also going out of our way to have as many charter propositions as is necessary to make sure the citizens are voting on each different item separately. And if there's any one thing in particular they're not comfortable with, they can vote it down. We want to give them the opportunity to say yes or no to all of these changes.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments before we proceed? All right. Thank you, Bob. You guys have known me long enough to know that if you get me started, it's hard to shut me down. So I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can. Section 8.02, franchise power of the city council, I want to point out again that this is substantial. This is another one that I would point out that each of you really need to get into the weeds, understand what is being presented here prior to sending it out to the voters. From my perspective, I think it is solid ground, I think it benefits us as a city, but certainly each of you needs to look at this, and once again, if you have questions, certainly myself and Ms. Gray, and if I could, Ms. Gray, would be happy to answer, Ms. Gray, your questions with regard to this. But if you look at section 8.02, we are attempting to remove the entire paragraph of the current charter under 8.02 and adding sub-- of the current charter under eight point oh two and adding sub-paragraphs A through D. Now, I'm not going to go through this, again, there's just so much here to consume. I would like for each of you to, to go through this and we'll, we'll touch on this on second reading. But if I, if I continue to go through all of the details here, we'll be, we'll be here forever. So again, eight point oh two, please take a, a quick look at that. Make sure that you've, you've got it in your mind as to, as to what's being recommended. All right. With that, we are moving over to, it starts on page twenty-one. No changes on twenty-one, but please recognize that we are now in article nine, section nine point oh one for the city manager. And in sub-paragraph B, we move over to page twenty-two for the recommended changes. And the recommended changes stipulates, in case of absence or disability of the city manager, the council may designate some qualified person other than an elected official of the city to perform the duties of the office during such absence or disability. The city manager shall receive such compensation as may be fixed by the council. So this gives you an opportunity, should there be an extended absence by the city manager for whatever reason, to then designate someone as a replacement. In subsection C, powers and duties of the city manager, we're asking to add the powers and duties herein. Conferr'd upon the city manager shall include, but shall not be limited to. Again, giving you more leverage on what the language actually says. And then adding the subsections seven, eight, and nine. Seven, stating direct and supervise the administration of all departments, offices, and agencies of the city except as otherwise provided by law or this charter. Eight, attend all meetings of the council except when excused by the council. And nine, see that all state laws and city ordinances are effectively enforced. So it extends the powers and duties of, of the city manager. And it really, I think, enhances what the city manager is, is able to do. And just, it just provides that in your, in your charter rather than just asking it to be done. All right. Moving on. Yes, isn't it?
Would you just define agencies? I mean, what is that, a contractor or? What, what would that be? Third party? It's number seven. Direct and supervise the administration of all departments, offices, and agencies of the city. What is an agency?
Ms. Cray, can you possibly help us or Mr. Alton?
Yeah, I don't know, Alicia, if you can, I wasn't at the charter discussions. It's a good question. I don't know if a specific issue came up on that or if it was just trying to be very broad in the language.
It was, it is just a broad overview of all the possibilities that he would have to have supervision over. So if there were an agency established, he would then be in charge of the agency.
Okay, what would an example be, I guess?
The housing authority.
Okay, all right. That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Grohl. Appreciate that. All right. Then to page twenty-four, which actually starts on page twenty-three. For section nine point oh six of the municipal court in subsection F, which is on page twenty-four. Again, just a, a cleanup of the language, simply stipulating that chapter forty-five, as amended. Once again, pretty clean, easy to understand. Moving on to article ten, subsection ten point oh two A. And if you'll remember, I brought this up as part of the changes that were recommended by the committee. So this is probably the most substantial thing that the committee is bringing forward to you with regard to the establishment of the Ethics Commission. And this in ten point oh two takes that language, I believe that was in three. Let me go back to it if I could real quick, just as a reference point. Three point oh two. Section seven, this is where that language is now residing. And, and it cleaned up for him for ten point oh two. And we've already read through this. So again, just connecting the dots for you on the changes on three and ten point oh two A. And now for article eleven. And I want to point out again that all of the recommendations that we are making to you tonight on article eleven were not at the behest of our committee members. This is straight from the H R Director, Tony Beckett. Again, working in close relationship with your chiefs of police and chiefs of fire and the associations for those members. And the recommendations that, that we're about to, to propose for you are directly from them. Is Ms. Beckett still?
Yes.
All right, all right. So if, would you prefer to cover this as we go through this? Or, because I certainly would. If we, if we go over to section eleven point oh three as an example. Let me just start this with the Employee Civil Service Commission. And we're, we're asking to change that from three to five. And, and Ms. Beckett, if you could give us some clarification with regard to that language.
I think the goal in this was to increase the number of members to five so that it would be easier to schedule. And then also, we included two additional alternates. That way, if there is an item that needs to be heard and maybe somebody has a conflict, they could recuse himself. Do you want me to go and just talk about all of this one?
You, please proceed.
Okay. And we also included the opportunity somewhere in this article eleven for each side to strike one member. So if there was a case to be heard in the police department, the employee that is filing the appeal could strike one person if they thought that they, they might lean favorably towards the city. And then the city could strike a person if maybe the, the chief didn't have a good relationship with the commissioner and he wanted to strike that. Each side would be able to strike one person. And then from that, they would have five members that potentially could hear, but a, a quorum would then just be sixty percent of those members. I haven't even looked at this, though. And then it also adds a section that says that they have to recuse themselves if they have any type of relationship other than an acquaintance with the appealing party or the department had. And that really, we're trying to keep it so that the people come into things and they're not, they don't have any preconceived ideas about the, either the employee or the department director. You can ask now, I don't care.
Go ahead, Ms. Watson. It, it could be completely off the subject. Has, was there any consideration given to, uh, having an ethics committee that's not made up of residents of the city?
You mean civil service?
We're...
I mean civil service, excuse me.
Thank you.
Same, but it reminded me of it.
So I don't believe that that topic actually came up. But as a recommendation, not included in your charter for information, but information from your committee. The recommendation might be, and this is a surprise to, to everyone involved here, but it is, is certainly something to consider. And that would be that since we have shared services such as nine-one-one and the likes with sister cities and North Richmond Hills and like. It might be something to consider whether or not our civil service board hears cases, for example, from North Richmond Hills. And we hear theirs so as to remove those appearances of being prejudiced to one side or the other. So that's something that the, the council, I think, can consider. We did not propose that in, in our charter because it wasn't proposed by this department. And, and we didn't want to put that out there other than a recommendation. So that'll be a, a conversation that you'll have to have outside of tonight as to whether that's something you would want to consider.
So, so actually, what I'm asking here is apples and rocks. We're not talking about apples and oranges even, that one hasn't got anything to do with the other. I, I'm just, I'm, I don't, I want to make sure we don't put something in place that we can't decide to do. Like, I, I really like that idea. That's the same thing with the election judges. I always think it's better if the elected judges in Holden City were scattered around and vice versa.
Perhaps you'd like to restate your question because I guess I'm just not that smart. I, I don't, I'm sure we got the...
I don't think it's you, I don't think it's you, oh. Well, people say that's not apples and apples, they say it's apples and oranges.
I got you, I just don't...
Some things are not that close, they're apples and rocks.
I got you.
I want to make sure that I wasn't that far off with this, what I was trying to say. I, I just want to make sure that we're, we, we don't put something in place that we have trouble changing.
Well, again...
And, and it sounds like to me those are not the same thing.
And I, I speak only as the chairman of this, of this committee in the fact that every one of the recommendations that you see tonight come directly, once again, restate that, with Ms. Beckett working in cooperation with Police Chief Cody Phillips, with Fire Chief Jacobs, with the association. Everything that you see comes directly from this department, working hand in hand and trying to put something together that will improve the processes for them.
Councilman Grohl? Yeah. Last week, we had one of our civil service members here and he was describing that he basically was out without pay for three days. And I think that some of the issue is, you know, some of these things can be very lengthy. And if we have individuals that have jobs, they're going to lose. And so then the pool of potential candidates is quite shallow. And I was speaking, I, I was speaking with a, a citizen. And they mentioned arbitration, so getting some individuals that are professionals in hearing conflicts and bringing them in. And so that might be a solution to where we don't have to deal with the pool. And it seems like a reasonable cost because he was saying it's through a thousand dollars a day maybe. And so...
I certainly understand your concerns and, and I think that, you know, speaking for myself, it would be difficult if I were asked to serve on civil service
Yep.
to, to step away from my job and to fill in...
Take three days of vacation.
Right.
I'd rather be someplace else other than in an office.
My civic duties. I'll let Ms. Beckett speak to you as to whether arbitration would be something that would be allowed.
Oh, I'd like to speak about the three days off without work. That was the first commission hearing that we've ever had during the day, usually there at night.
Okay.
When employee, when the commissioners are off of work. Of the, at that hearing, two of the three commissioners are retired, so they don't have jobs.
I know, yep.
And so...
Still, you limit your pool because if you're just...
I, I agree, but...
You're going for retired people.
We'll go just to doing it at night, we'll go back to just doing it at night. Because then, you know, I think that the thought is, is that sometimes it's easier just to do it during the day, but really that's not necessarily the case.
And I like the idea of the arbitration because we're a small, you know, we're a forty-five thousand population city. But, you know, really, we're close knit. If, if you start thinking about it, everybody knows everybody else. And, and so, again, the pool that, that volunteers at the city is very small and the pool that votes is very small. And so that's why I kind of like having the arbitrator now, looking at north, potentially having North Richmond Hills citizens. I kind of like that also. But I'm just looking to where there's no shadow of a doubt that somebody is partial to one side or the other. And so...
We've had some very outstanding commissioners and...
Oh, I don't, I don't...
The ones that we've had that are, that have been, that would appear to be the most unbiased are ones that don't get involved at all with the city, that they are virtually unknowns.
Well, yeah, that'd be good. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Thompson.
I just want this out for the record. I know that in my presence when this was discussed, the committee or the commission members felt that they could not justify or could not put a money amount on having someone to come in. So they very much felt that, that paying someone or doing that was kind of out of their realm. If I'm not mistaken, that was their feeling. So, um, and I really wanted that part out because these are citizens. These are the people that make up our community. And I feel very strongly that no matter how we might feel, we do need to consider that and think of options. And like we were saying, uh, maybe set up a mutual agreement with the cities around that has a civil service commission and working it out between the cities. But that's not something we would have had time to do. That takes time. So we've got two years, maybe a little bit more before the next review. So I challenge people to sit down and think about this and maybe think toward that.
Thank you.
As an option.
I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I'll throw Mayor Lanford under the bus with regard to some statements on, on this matter. Where he did express some concerns as to whether we could find five qualified people who are able, not just willing, but able to meet as a civil service board. I, I appreciate the fact that we'd be holding it at night and at least that way they wouldn't lose pay, they would just lose time. But I think that there's a couple of things to, to consider. Number one is current conditions, cost, even, even arbitration, whether or not it would be allowed. I think that would be a matter for the city's attorney's office. But even arbitration has a cost. And if we are able to put this into place and find those five citizens, then I think that that is our, our best play, if you will. Because certainly I think that saves some time and money for the city. And to Ms. Thompson's point, that gives you some time during this period to consider, are there other changes? But I would want that to be seen and heard by not only Ms. Beckett, but by your members of the police and fire associations as to whether that's something that would be viable. Mayor Pro Tem?
Uh, Ms. Chapman, at this time, several people in here would like to take a five-minute break. Because the chapter eleven is a long chapter, okay?
I may be asleep by the time you...
Yeah, come back at nine oh five, would you please?
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner, so, uh, forgive me guys for failing to, to mention that as part of my, my opening statements. Again, as, uh, Ms. Beckett just pointed out, uh, the recommendation is to change the civil service committee, uh, commission, uh, from consisting of three members to five with two additional alternates and, uh, that each commissioner shall hold their office for a period of two years. Uh, so that language is in eleven point oh three. Eleven point oh five additionally cleans up some things, uh, instead of saying two, uh, the language should be sixty percent of the members. That allows us for however many members we have of the civil service to make sure that it's, it is sixty percent rather than a named, uh, you know, right. All right. So, and again, the, the last part of eleven oh five, at any hearing, a commissioner must recuse himself or herself, that, uh, Ms. Beckett, uh, just went through for you. So if we could move then, uh, to the next recommendation, which is on page thirty for section eleven point thirteen for probationary period and, and subsection A, we're changing this to state a certified person appointed to a beginning position in the fire police department must serve a probationary period of one year. Um, I think this is something that I, again, Ms. Beckett, if you could explain this, I think it'd be much better coming from you than for me to try to, to go through the detail.
Okay. Um, in the police department, the requirements to become a police officer are not as stringent as they are in the fire department. So effectively you can be a police officer without being certified and without having any experience at all. You can come straight off the street and as long as you meet their background criteria, your work history is stable, uh, you can, uh, become a police officer. Well, if you're not certified when you get here, you have to go to the police academy and the police academy currently is four to four and a half months. And the way the charter currently states it, um, the probationary period is twelve months. Well, if you send an employee that's a police officer to the academy and then you get them out of the academy and then you do the work that they have to do there in the police department and then start doing them through the training, one year is not enough time for them to assess whether the employee is gonna be an asset to the city or whether they're just not gonna make it. And so for people that are not certified, the police department would like to have the, um, period set at eighteen months. Because that gives them the opportunity to come, to go to the academy and to come back and then to go through all of their field training and then be out on their own. And then it provides the department an opportunity to make an assessment about whether they're gonna be successful or not before their probationary period ends. Now, in the fire department, uh, they're already certified, but at some point in the future that might change. Um, you know, if the recruiting gets too difficult for firefighters, we might have to make some changes. And so we just included the fire department in here as well. And so we wouldn't have to come back next time and say, hey, we need to change the fire department to eighteen months as well. Now, if somebody comes on and they're already certified in the police department, they would just serve a twelve-month probationary period because those employees don't have to lose four and a half months going to a police academy because they've already done that. So they would do the city's, um, in-house kind of their training and then go out with their field officers and then be on their own much quicker than somebody that was not certified.
It does, uh, it does include a result officer too or a reserve?
Well, it wouldn't, if they are certified and they're a reserve and they came on board to work full-time, then yes, it would include.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. If we could move then to page thirty-two, which again starts on page thirty-one under section eleven point one seven, uh, for entrance exams and eligibility lists. In subsection C, um, again, I defer back to, to Ms. Beckett just so that we are giving you the right information rather than me trying to paraphrase.
Okay.
Please proceed.
All right. So for the examinations, you know, we have to give a competitive exam for police officers and for firefighters. Being in the metroplex, one of our biggest issues is getting enough qualified candidates to take the test. And so what we're proposing here is that we have the opportunity to travel all over the state of Texas and administer as many exams as we can in twenty-one days and create one list. Because the way the charter is currently written, we can create a list and then test again and create another list. So each test forces us to have a, um, one list and so we have to exhaust that list before we can add someone else. But what we'd like to do is have the opportunity to do plenty of testing and then work through that entire list because we think that'll give us, uh, the best pool of candidates to pick from. And then it also includes the opportunity to test electronically if that technology becomes available. We're not sure that's available right this minute, but that doesn't mean that it wouldn't become available somewhere in the future. Now, if you go down to section F, um, currently the charter allows to add five points for someone who is an honorably discharged veteran. The police department would like to add the opportunity to give some additional points because what happens when you have an open competitive exam is that you might have someone that's fresh out of college or fresh out of high school, um, that might score better on a test than someone who has been a police officer somewhere else. And they might get snatched up by another agency before we have the opportunity to get them, to them on the list. Because once we create the list, the police department has to start with the very first candidate and they must hire or eliminate candidates, one, two, three, four, all the way through the entire list. And so what they'd like to do is to give an edge to people that have, um, already got their certifications. So in section F, um, they want to make it so that the maximum points that someone could get in addition to their score for passing the test is fifteen. Um, they would get the five points from being in the military and being honorably discharged. And then somebody who is an applicant for the police department and they're already certified as a peace officer through the state of Texas or who is an applicant for the police department, has thirty-six months of continuous service as a paid full-time peace officer in Texas with no more than a ninety-day break in service. Um, as long as they present that information at the time of the test, that they're able to get, um, additional points for that as well. I actually think. Five for each. Okay, sorry. Had to confer with my people here, sorry. Okay, so if they're already certified, they'd get five points. And if they had thirty-six months of continuous service as a police officer, they would also get an additional five points. So if they've been in the military, were certified and had thirty-six months of continuous service, they would get a total of fifteen points added to a passing score. Now they'd have to pass the test first. They can't use extra points to pass the test. This, we feel, will help the department in getting those candidates that might be the most qualified further up on the list. Because if we have people that don't have to go to the academy, you know, when we send people to the academy, the city pays for that. So it also reduces our hiring cost if we hire people that are already certified.
Don't go anywhere, please. Uh, let's move on to the next page for section eleven point one nine. And there's three changes being recommended for eleven point one nine.
Okay, in section A, this is really just a housekeeping issue. Um, the fire department doesn't have captains anymore. Those titles have been reclassified to battalion chief. So they wanted to reflect the accurate title. In section B, the police department no longer has police lieutenants. They have police captains. So they wanted to do some housekeeping and clean that title up. In section D, this section presents an issue if we have a number of employees, uh, or a number of vacancies in either one of the departments. It currently says that there has to be three potential candidates for each current vacancy. And so what they would like to do is just to have three current candidates, uh, potential candidates sign up for the test. Because if there's two, um, vacancies or three vacancies, they would like to be able to just exhaust a list and give those people the, uh, opportunity to be promoted prior to opening the test up to people that have less than two years of service or to the next lower rank if that were the case.
Moving on to section eleven point two one, I believe that, uh, Ms. Beckett has already touched on this with regard to, uh, technology and, and whether or not they'll be able to use that in the future. Um, did you want to touch on subsection C?
Sure. The way the charter is currently written, those two, the number one and the number two, they're actually switched. And so what we would like to do is to ensure that the candidates, when they're taking the test, that they're referencing the source material and that the department has the opportunity to test them over duties for the position, uh, that they're testing for. That is a very important component and they want to make sure that it, it's, it's spelled out clear enough for their, uh, their liking so that we can test over both of those things.
And moving on to eleven point two two with regard to, uh, subsection D. Um, the changing here, the minimum score shall be reduced to sixty points to create an eligibility list if no candidate scored at least sixty points. And I believe too that this is something that, uh, is, so I, I think we need to back up and let's talk about the statement. If no candidate scored at least seventy points after question challenges are resolved, then the added language is the minimum score shall be reduced to sixty points to create an eligibility list. If no candidate scored at least sixty points, and then we go back to the old language, the test shall be declared invalid and another test scheduled and open to the next level of eligible sworn employees. And this just gives them another opportunity to open the candidate pool, uh, and gives them better opportunity to, to get better candidates. Um, anything you wanted to add to that? Section eleven point two four, alternate promotional system, uh, in subsection C. And I think I'm going to defer back to you because this was, if you need to clarify.
It's kinda technical.
Here it is.
The current charter says that, um, in every regular shift, that we will, um, have an election if there's an alternate promotional system has been presented. So since the fire department went to working a twenty-four, I mean, a twenty-four, a forty-eight, ninety-six schedule, that would mean that we would have to have someone there doing the election for six consecutive days. And so what this change proposes is that for a twenty-four hour period during each forty-eight hour tour, so not the whole forty-eight hours, but for twenty-four hours. So there's an A shift, a B shift and a C shift. So we still have the same seventy-two hours, but it would be just one day for voting on each shift instead of forty-eight hours. And it also says that we can use electronic voting if that, um, is available.
Then on to section eleven point two five on the promotional eligibility, subsection B is increasing the eligibility list from ninety to one hundred days. Again, giving your police and fire department more flexibility. On page thirty-eight, let's move over to, let's see, thirty-seven. Let me back up. Thirty-seven, we are, uh, I'm not sure, Art, I, I apologize here. We've, we've got red language that's been lined through. Do you remember what this was?
Hey, Steve.
Mr. G.
On that ninety days, hundred days, is that business days or just calendar days?
That is calendar days. If it doesn't say business days and it's silent.
Just assume it's calendar days. Okay, uh, unless otherwise noted. Thank you.
Let me, uh, take a minute to look back through our current chart. Can you speak to that? That's why we've, we've redlined through.
Yes. Okay, on eleven point two six and effectively in each section where it's talking about discipline. Currently, the charter says that the department head shall provide to the employee and file with the commission by delivery to the director a written statement. And so we're taking out with the commission by delivery and the, the department head will just have to submit their discipline, proposed discipline to the director of civil service. And that's the only change in eleven point two six and it is the exact same change in eleven point two seven and also in eleven point two eight.
No need to sit down. You might as well keep rolling. You're doing well.
Okay.
Eleven point two nine here.
Okay. In eleven point two nine, we had a lot of discussion, as you can tell by all of the, um, changes to that section. Um, the commission, the length of time to hold the hearing is being extended from thirty days to sixty days and that is business days. And that is simply because it is very difficult to coordinate multiple attorneys, commission members, um, employees and department directors. So we need that extra time. It also provides that the period may be extended by written request of. It also provides that the period may be extended by written request of the city or the sworn employee for an additional ninety days, ninety business days, subject to the approval of the commission chairperson. And then an additional extension can be granted with the approval of the department head and the employee, appealing employee, which shall not unreasonably withheld pending approval of the civil service commission chairperson. Now, the reason that all these changes are in here is because when you look at the way the charter is currently written, there are really no deadlines. And there's no, there's no sticking point or no penalty for the city to delay a hearing. If they can't get it scheduled, it just is in limbo. And so the associations wanted to have some meat to this section of the policy. So that is what has precipitated all of these changes. So if the initial request for an extension is not approved and dated by the chairperson within the initial sixty business days, the maximum extension is thirty business days. And this is where it gets teeth. If the appeal is not heard within the prescribed deadlines in this section due to the appealing employee, the department head's decision stands. The department head's decision is overturned if the delay is due to the city. So that we felt like was fair, if we put some time constraints on both sides, it seemed to be a fairer situation for the employee as well as for the city. And then we also provided the opportunity for the commission to render a decision in writing within fifteen business days after the hearing. And the decision has to state whether the question was upheld, modified, or reversed. Then in section D, the current charter says that the department head is limited to what is written in the original charge letter and the action letter when the discipline is issued. But we want to be able to have the department head bring in the performance of the employee. But the associations, and I agree with them, they wanted to have a timeline for that. So the department head can include performance issues that occur within the last five years of the incident that's being appealed. So they couldn't go back fifteen years and say, well, fifteen years ago, you did something similar. So within five years, any conduct that was inappropriate that may have played a role in the reason that they're doing the discipline can be included. And then in section E, within five days of the appeal being filed, the city or the appealing party can request the recusal of one commissioner, I think we touched on that earlier. So if the appealing employee wants to have one commissioner stricken and the city wants to have one person stricken from consideration for being on the appeal, they can do that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, even the, we can go back five years, right? But the city required to keep the record for how many years? Or just after five years, we destroy everything?
Oh, no, oh, no, we keep the records. But they can only go back and reference their performance for five years prior to the date of the.
But we keep record for.
Yes, we keep them in accordance with the state record retention.
Councilman Rowe. So what's the maximum time that this thing could be extended? So if we go ninety days, is ninety days the max? Or is it thirty days and then we add another ninety days?
Okay, so it's sixty days is the first, so that's sixty. And then it can be extended for an additional ninety days.
Okay, so now we're at a hundred and fifty?
Fifty.
And then another thirty, so a half a year?
And then, let's see. And then an additional extension, so let's say that the appealing employee is hospitalized.
Yep.
There's a section that says that an extension can be granted if both parties agree.
So then it could be indefinitely. It could be to some later determined date, maybe a year from now, or from the date that, because let's say he got into a car accident.
Exactly.
And has to have rehab and things like that, okay.
Exactly. And then if they, if it's not requested during the initial sixty days and we don't have it dated and signed by the chairperson, the maximum is thirty days.
Okay.
So then the maximum would be ninety days.
So provided that the individual's not in a car accident that requires him to go through a lot of physical, maybe a hundred and eighty days is the ballpark for the maximum if we do everything without any extenuating circumstances?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, believe it or not, we have now concluded all of the recommended changes. I do want to point out that we have some recommendations from the committee that aren't in the charter itself. One of those, again, with the shared services with regard to potentially having NRH for someone else where we share the services, utilizing their civil service boards. The other, there's two other recommendations. One would be the potential of having a copy of the municipal code of ethics in the lobby for public viewing, so that people can come in and actually read that. Sometimes it's hard to find when you go through the city's information, it's not always easy to find that. And having a copy of that municipal code of ethics out for display might be beneficial to our citizens. And the last thing that we had is that we would highly recommend that we conduct background checks for anyone who would serve on a board or committee. Again, those are not recommendations to put into the charter, but recommendations for your consideration as a council. Having said that, I would like to go home, I don't know about you, but I think there's other topics that we'd all like to be touching base on. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, before we let you leave, Council, you have any question or no? Okay, nobody have any?
I do.
Ms. Rowe?
If, okay, so let's say we look at North Hills for their civil service or an outside, you know, party to come in, maybe arbitrage, or not arbitrage, but.
Arbitration.
Arbitration. Can we get it in for the second reading, before the second reading, or? What's the potential? Are we gonna, are we gonna?
I think things under consideration here that we need to look at. The first would be that I would, I would think that our city attorney would want to take this under advisement as to whether that is something that we would want to do begin with. And then I think that also under consideration would be that our chiefs, Cody Phillips and Mr. Jacobs would both want to confer on this and even potentially talk with your association members as to whether that's a viable option. I would certainly want their input before we ever make any.
That's why I'm saying this now, so all the people that have a vested interest in this can have a communication with the.
I think you've been assigned.
Okay. Some of the problems with depending on other agencies to do this is if their civil service policies are in line with ours. Some are state civil service, we're arbitraging.
Do you know if North?
I don't know if they're city civil service or state, so they're city civil service. But it depends on what their charter says and how it's outlined in their.
I doubt their charter is going to say you can only hear cases, because nobody's ever thought of it, I'm guessing. So that would be my guess, because we're going into, I guess, I don't know if it's uncharted territory, but it's, you know, I've never heard of it. But arbitration, that wouldn't require anybody, it would just have to, you know, say that, have a panel of.
I shouldn't be just, I'm trying to say this politically, but if North Hills is listening, looks like with anything, when North Hills are going to charge us. So with arbitration, there's going to be a fee associated with it, they're just not going to volunteer. Because if their charter doesn't align with ours where we can reciprocate, you know, return on, you know, their investment, then they're probably not going to be willing to do it. But I mean, it's a great thought and, I mean, it's something to look at, that we can branch outside Halt City. I think a big portion of when we went through this process is not to go in there and revamp the whole process just to kind of, you know, form it to what current standards are. And I think that was a process that we were looking at. But going through there and redoing it, I'm sure there would be people more than willing to do that to look at outside.
If we could quickly look at it and see what the feasibility, if it's like, you know, talking insane, then just say, hey, you're insane. It can't be done, but if there's a potential.
They can't fire you.
So if there's a potential, maybe we can see if there's a way that we can get a solution to this.
Obviously.
Madame Thompson?
Mr. Grove, I think that that is something that would, would by necessity have to be in the charter. Certainly, when we touch article eleven, there are many, many parties who are going to be knocking on the door. So if we do that, then again, we want to make sure that everybody that's involved has heard this out, has made their input. And certainly before we make any recommendations on the second reading, that we understand the full ramifications. One of the things that I pointed out to this committee all along the way is the, you know, that we have repercussions, the potential for unintended consequences when we do anything to a charter. So we really need to think that one through and so I'll rely on our chiefs and Ms. Beckett to come back to the table with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madame, I'm in Thompson, I'm sorry.
As a comment to what Walter is saying, I appreciate that we want to get that done before the second reading. But in my mind, I think that would be a process of going to the associations and working with other cities. It will take time, that's not something you can rush through and do, in my opinion, but I'm not saying it's impossible.
Certainly, having the chiefs take a look at that and see whether it's something that's viable, I think would at least give us an opportunity to think about that. And if it doesn't become something that we want to put into charter or come to fruition at this time, then certainly council can take that under advisement and consider it for the next charter review.
Right. I just wanted to make mention of the municipal code of ethics. What most people, and I would guarantee you the people sitting on boards and commissions is not even aware that this policy or ordinance, and I'm not exactly sure when it originated. Mr. Lane probably can give the little backstory on that. But I think it's very important that our employees, our staff, our boards and commissions, and our elected officials, everyone is supposed to be aware of the municipal code of ethics. That was the main reason that I understood from the subcommittee when they presented their information was no one knew about this. So I want, I want to make it as public as we can by saying, not just display it as it was recommended. And that's fine to have that, but I think we also need to have it on our website so that people, you know, they're not able to come during the hours of operation. Maybe they work and they can't get here to read it. But it's available on the website for the people to read and ask questions. But I do challenge people to go through and read it and become aware of it.
Thank you.
I would also like to comment on that, and that is that having served on a few different things for this city, that that code was never mentioned to me, nor did I even think to go look at it. So from a training standpoint, when you are considering putting someone on a board, a committee, a commission, or whatever, to make available to them, not just tell them to please go look at it, but how simple would it be to put that in the hands of anyone who's coming on, serving in any capacity for our city, to have that in front of them so that we can say definitively that we gave you a copy of the code of ethics when you came to the table? I think that would benefit all of us and I think that should be put into any training modules that we have or given to any board members, any appointed positions that we may have.
Thank you, Madame.
I have a couple of things, but I'm going to follow up on that. You know, maybe as council liaisons to these different boards or committees, we could take in copies and ask people to sign them. I just signed one when I, you know, put in to run again this time. So, and I understand somebody else had signed one before too. So, you know, maybe we could do that at some point in time, fairly soon. Just an idea.
I think that's a great idea, I think it should be signed.
Yeah, I've got three boards that I'm liaison to and I could take them in each time, you know, and get their signatures and hand them out and tell them how important it is.
Certainly, Art doesn't have anything to do, so we should.
If we can do that, maybe we, I don't even know that we can do it.
To file as possible.
Yeah, and then my final, I mean, we can talk about that, but the final thing is, when is our, the final date that this is due that we need to pass it or reject it or whatever to get it on the election?
February fifteenth is the deadline to call the election, so that's second reading of the ordinance. Basically, we're on schedule for you to adopt this at your next meeting or second reading, so tonight is first reading.
Okay, but the next meeting, we can come prepared to discuss a little bit more in detail since we have more facts in front of us.
Absolutely, one request all of us would make, and especially me. If you've got some items that you want to possibly make revisions to before second reading, we can do that all the way up to second reading, but if you could give us some feedback before the council meeting, because we truly have to have the ballot language itself to adopt what the ordinance that night. So it's hard to scramble and try to rewrite things if we're not aware that there are issues that need to be revisited. So if you could give us a heads up by contacting the city manager, letting him know what issues you've got, that way we can be prepared to try to deal with making revisions on second reading.
All right, thank you.
And if I could request that those be presented to me as far in advance of the second reading as possible so that I too can be prepared for that meeting, I would certainly appreciate it.
A good suggestion.
Before we take a vote.
If I could prior to.
Also, member Watkins.
Am I the only one in the world that thinks it'd be real handy if we got together and looked at this, some kind of workshop or something? Or we just want to run in here and do this again like this, or? That's just a thought. I got a lot of time on my hands, some of y'all don't.
I don't think, I don't think we have time, if what the counselor just said, unless we schedule another council meeting between now and. It is, to state what I think the council's aware of, obviously, your committees work very hard to put together recommendations. There's no legal requirement that this go to the voters in May. But if it doesn't go in May, if you're not able to make a decision by February fifteenth, then it can't go on the May ballot. Then it would, the next available ballot is the November ballot, because we have to do this at a uniform election date. But if you're not comfortable moving forward in May with these propositions, then so be it. We can kick it around some more and shoot for the November election, that's your choice.
And if I may, at this time, now that I've sucked all the oxygen out of the room, I'd like to give Ms. Crane an opportunity to speak if there's anything that you'd like to add or to put in your two cents with regard to anything that you've seen so far.
There were a couple items that we didn't, as a commission, they voted not to bring forward. One is we discussed at length the nepotism provision and we brought forward some of the state law provisions. State law allows for you to provide a lookback time for current city employees. If someone in the first or second degree of consequentiety is then elected, they could still maintain their employment with the city. That wasn't brought forward, but it is something that you can consider as a council. The other is, we did discuss at length the ethics in ten point zero two. As presented tonight, you are required, if it passes, you're required to utilize the ethics commission for any ethics complaints against city council. I would advise that you consider that as it's presented. Right now, say if it passes on the charter election day and you have an ethics complaint the next day, you don't have an ethics committee to utilize at that time. So that's just another consideration as you're looking through and going through all of these provisions to consider.
Thank you for that, and that brings up a couple of points that I did want to bring forward. And one of those is that should you choose to establish the ethics commission or bring that forward to the voters, we have a lot of material that the subcommittee came up with. We presented you with one document that's associated to your charter revisions tonight. That's nothing more than, I believe it's Bedford's language with regard to how they embody their ethics commission. We can certainly give you and present to you for your consideration, any of that. I think though that the consideration is first, do you want to form an ethics commission? If so, then you look. If so, then you look at how that is provided for in, in the charter, not only in the first section, but in, in ten point oh two, as to how that's, that's written. And then once that, that comes to fruition, then we would be happy as, as a committee to work with the council on helping you look through the materials that, that were garnered and trying to put together this information with other cities, how that commission works, what it looks like, to help you kind of guide your way into what you may want that Ethics Commission to look like.
Okay. Before we make a motion of this, let's say this way, you guys have been done excellent job, a lot of them. But majority of the change here is just, you know, change the language more than train the rule or regulation. I don't see why we needed another workshop, because the second reading is next month. By the way, each of us elect one of representative in that board. Why don't we monitor with that person to see anything have done? My personal opinion, I don't feel like we need another workshop. And if no more comment, go ahead. We make a motion to see you agree or not. Councilman Grow?
Don't we need a public hearing since this is an ordinance? Or, nope? Okay, then I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance O dash two zero one nine dash zero zero three dash zero one for consideration regarding a special election to be held May fourth for the purpose of charter amendments on the first reading.
First reading. And Madame Thompson?
That would be for second.
Second. Please, rest your vote if you have no comment or make a motion. Rest your vote, please. Okay, item number ten, I believe unanimous approve. Thank you. Now we move to number fifteen, excuse absent of CD. Okay. Uh, sorry, we don't have staff report, future agenda, number twelve.
Okay, I, okay, I have a future agenda item.
Ms. Grow, go ahead. Yes.
Okay. We need to schedule a review of the city attorney pursuant to City Charter, Section nine point zero five, that a review should be implemented every three years, or should be done every three years. And we are behind, because that was elected, or that, that changed the charter was done on eleven seventeen oh eight. So we are, so I suggest that we do it on the second meeting of February, which is the twenty fifth. Okay. The city charter on Section nine point zero five says that we have to review the city attorney every three years. And so I figure since we are behind, should have been done last November, that we do it on the twenty fifth of, of twenty nineteen, which would be our second meeting in February. So that way, if anybody has any questions or things that they want to review, gives us time to write those things down.
Thank you, Councilman Grow. Any more from our council? If don't, item number thirteen, fourteen already done. Now we move to number fifteen. Excuse absent of council member. We have the mayor absent today and...
Anybody idea, any, anybody have any idea why he's not here?
Mayor Everett sent me an email saying that he had a scheduling conflict, that he was gonna try to get off in time for the meeting, and then he sent me a, a, a email saying that he would not be able to and asked Dr. Tron to take over.
Okay.
And I go ahead, make a move for approve the absent of the mayor, David Everett. Okay, Ms. Thompson?
That would be for second.
Okay. Please, rest your vote. Okay, yeah, we unanimous approve it. Okay, now let's see, next one. Okay, we got number fifteen, future agenda item already done. Yeah, okay. We don't have the executive session in... Uh, it's right now at nine fifty. If there is no more question or answer or comment, I will adjourn the relaxation at nine forty, fifty, I'm sorry.